Evening. Special meeting. Of the Socor ISD. This special meeting of the Socor ISD Board of Trustees will come to order, please. The date is Monday, June ninth, twenty twenty-five, and the time is five thirty-two. We have a confirmed quorum. Ms. Maribel Masias is joining us virtually. Thank you for joining us for this meeting, both in person and online via our YouTube stream. The full recording of the meeting will be available on YouTube and archived through the board website, where viewers have the option of watching the meeting with closed captions translated in multiple languages. Gracias por acompañarnos en esta reunión tanto en persona como en línea a través de nuestra transmisión de YouTube. La grabación completa de la reunión estará disponible en YouTube y se archiverá a través del sitio web de la junta donde los espectadores tienen la opción de ver la reunión con subtítulos traducidos a varios idiomas. Please join us in standing for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With public comment. We do have two speakers signed up for public comment, however they are specific agenda for agenda items. That is item five A, so when we arrive at that item, I'll go ahead and call those speakers up. Those things in order, I'll go ahead and read. Forum statement. At this moment, each person who signed up was provided a copy of the open forum basic rules and advised when they signed up that policy B E D applies to the process. Please respect the process during your presentation. As a reminder, each speaker is allowed three minutes. And again, when we get to item five A, I will go ahead and call those individuals up. Continuing then with new business for A. Consider approval of additional teacher and administrator employment contracts for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year. Ms. Stiles, please.
Good evening, President Nahada, members of the board and Superintendent Mr. Vazquez. I'm Selena Stiles, Chief Human Resources Officer for the District. This evening, I'm here on behalf of administration requesting your approval of additional teacher employment contracts for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. A list of employees was provided in your board packet. Before you take action, I would like to give you an update on some numbers. From the action that was taken during the May fifth special board meeting this evening, we are bringing back six contracts for your approval, reducing the number of employees impacted by the reduction enforced from thirty-six to thirty. At this time, I will turn it over to Mr. Blanco for additional information on the action to be taken.
Thank you, Ms. Stiles. Steve Blanco, Legal Counsel for the District, or President Nahada, Superintendent Vazquez, and members of the board. Included within the group of individuals that you are approving contracts for are the four individual teachers for whom the board originally accepted the recommendation of the administration to propose non-renewal of their term contracts. Those were E. Genova, I Lopez, L. Renovato, and K. Kessler. Each of those four individuals actually requested a hearing on the recommendation and the proposal to non-renew their contracts. And we've been in touch with the council for each of them. They understand that the board tonight is being asked to approve contracts that will be issued to each of these four individuals. And the administration is with this action withdrawing the recommendation to non-renew those proposals. I'm sorry, is withdrawing the proposals to non-renew those term contracts. These individuals will be issued contracts, which should make the need for hearings on the proposed non-renewal moot. And we have agreement from all council with the exception of one, and I don't want to get into that until we have to. We expect this will resolve it, but I wanted the board to be aware of the fact that the hearings that are being scheduled are likely to be unnecessary with the action that you take tonight. Thank you.
So at this time, administration recommends your approval of the additional teacher employment contracts for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year as presented.
Second. Motion to approve made by Ms. Trigera, seconded by Mr. Rodriguez. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And the item passes.
Thank you.
Moving on then to four B. Consider approval of amendment to employment contract of A. Nevadas for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. Ms. Stiles, please.
Yes, sir. Good evening again. This evening, I'm here on behalf of administration requesting your approval of the amendment to the physician's contract. The amendment is taking the current twenty-four, twenty-five contract and it's extending the contract period through September thirtieth of twenty twenty-five. There will be a board workshop with specifics on the clinic status shortly. However, the purpose of asking for the amendment is to comply with the Texas Medical Board, remove liability for A. Nevadas and the district and allow the staff at the clinic to properly transition patient information, medications, so patients experience a smooth transition to a new provider or pharmacy of choice. So at this time, administration recommends your approval of the amendment for the physician's contract as presented.
Yes, sir. Motion to approve. To approve made by Mr. Woodcraft, seconded by Ms. Navada. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And the item passes. Thank you, Ms. Stiles.
Thank you.
Moving on then with item five A, the budget workshop presentation of the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six employee compensation plan. We do have two speakers for this item. First speaker is Anthony Delgado, please.
Good evening, President Nahada, members of the board and Superintendent Mr. Vazquez. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Anthony Delgado, and I'm here to respectfully request the board consider increasing the special education stipend for our behavior unit teachers. Our current stipend has remained at two thousand dollars for over a decade. And even as intensity and demands of the job have increased significantly, significantly, today, our behavior units serve multi-grade, multi-grade classrooms from kindergarten through twelfth grade. While addressing the most severe behavioral and emotional needs, we work with the students who display frequent physical and verbal aggression, self-harm, and other crisis-level behaviors, all while managing complex academic needs across several grade levels. Our job is not only difficult, it's dangerous, emotionally demanding, and incredibly specialized. And yet, our compensation has not evolved to reflect that. Across the state of Texas, most districts offered stipends specifically for high-end needs special education positions. In fact, the typical range statewide is between three thousand and four thousand, with some districts offering even more. Nearby districts such as Isleta have offered five thousand, and Clint has offered two thousand plus an additional ten thousand offered within a three-year contract signing. These higher stipends help them recruit and retain qualified experienced professionals, but most importantly allows the behavior teachers to feel valued and appreciated. In comparison, Socorro ISD's two thousand dollar stipend leaves us behind, despite the fact that we often handle some of the toughest assignments in the region. This creates both a moral issue and a staffing challenge. We're losing strong candidates to neighboring districts that offer better support. I'm speaking on behalf of all our behavior unit teachers. We are passionate, we are committed, and we are doing the work. But it's time for our stipend to reflect the true value of that work and align with the other Texas districts already doing it. I respectfully request that this item be placed on the agenda for a vote, that I be given the opportunity to present supporting data and testimony. Thank you for your time, and thank you for all you do to support our students and staff.
Our next speaker, Ms. Rosie Pettis.
Good evening, President Nahada, members of the board, Superintendent Mr. Vazquez, and district leadership. My name is Rosie Pettis, and I stand before you this evening on behalf of the proud members of West Texas Alliance and the dedicated employees of our district, our educators, and our invaluable support staff. First, I want to acknowledge and thank you for the work you've done in addressing the difficult budget challenges facing our district. We know these are not easy conversations, and we appreciate the time, thought, and energy you've invested in navigating this financial landscape. These are not easy times, and we do not take lightly the complexity of the decisions before you. We appreciate the much-deserved pay raise for teachers given by the state, but it has been long overdue. So while you are participating in the budget workshops and being fiscally responsible, we urge you to consider a pay raise for all employees. Last year, employees did not receive a raise. Since then, the cost of living has continued to rise, and perhaps most significantly, we have experienced a steep increase in insurance premiums. These increases are not just numbers on paper. They are impacting real lives in painful ways. Many of you have already heard echoed in past presentations, employees that have had to make heartbreaking choices due to the rising cost of healthcare. One shared that they have begun skipping therapy sessions or going to specialists because the new co-pay is simply unaffordable. Another spoke about cutting back on necessary medications, not optional treatments, but essential prescriptions, because even with insurance, the cost is now too high. These are not isolated stories. They reflect a broader reality across our district, dedicated employees sacrificing their health in order to stay afloat financially. When no raise is given and premiums increase, the result is not neutral. It is a pay cut. Yet despite that, our employees remain loyal to this district. They continue to show up, work hard, and give their best to our students and to our schools. A step increase and a modest raise are not just about compensation. They are acknowledgements of the burdens our employees are carrying and a gesture of good faith that their loyalty and service are seen and valued. Thank you again for your time, your leadership, and for your continued commitment to the people who are the backbone of this district.
Then Ms. Stiles.
Good evening, President Nahada, members of the board, and Superintendent Mr. Vazquez. This evening, I will be presenting the proposed compensation plan for the upcoming twenty-five, twenty-six school year. I will be reviewing proposed salary schedules for classroom teachers, non-classroom teachers, nurses, librarians, and counselors. I will also review proposed compensation manual updates, and finally, the proposal for salary increases for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year. I will start with sharing our current teacher, nurse, and librarian salary schedule and the comparison with some of our neighboring districts. As you can see, Socorro ISD, along with Isleta ISD, have the highest starting teacher rates. I have included the three-year mark, the five-year mark, with five-year increments because of how HB two has identified the teacher retention increases. At the three-year mark, you can see that Socorro ISD has the highest annual salary when compared with our neighboring districts. And the same is true for five, ten, fifteen, and twenty years. With HB two being adopted, there is specific language that outlines the teacher retention pay structure and the support staff pay structure. The proposal will be split. The proposal will be to split the current teacher, nurse, and librarian pay schedule. We will have one pay schedule for only classroom teachers and a separate pay schedule for non-classroom teachers, nurses, and librarians. HB two outlines the pay structure for classroom teachers as follows. Zero to two years of experience, this group of employees will receive a step increase that is supported by the support staff allotment of HB two. Three to four years of experience, this group of employees will receive a twenty-five hundred dollar annual increase that is supported by the teacher retention allotment of HB two. And five-plus years of experience, this group of employees will receive a five thousand dollar annual increase that is supported by the teacher retention allotment of HB two. Non-classroom teachers, nurses, and librarians will receive a one-point-five percent increase off the market midpoint and will be supported by the support staff allotment of HB two. This is what the proposed classroom teacher pay schedule will look like for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year. We also assume that the neighboring districts would apply the HB two requirements for the teacher retention allotment similarly as we will. You can see that the starting salary does not change. Years three, five, ten, fifteen, and twenty still show that we are the highest-paying district when compared with our neighboring districts. This is what the proposed non-classroom teacher, nurse, and librarian pay schedule will look like for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year. It is difficult to assume what our neighboring districts will do since they have the option to keep one pay schedule or apply a separate one with an increase as we have done. Based on the HB two allotment estimates for support staff, we have calculated that it totals about a one-point-five percent increase for all other support staff except administration. The comparison here with our neighboring districts is still using their current twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five salary schedules. Historically, we've not presented the counselor pay schedule since it was based on the teacher's salary schedule. However, since we will be splitting this teacher's schedule into a classroom teacher's schedule and a non-classroom teacher's schedule, we felt it necessary to explain which scale their salary will be based on. This is our current counselor's schedule, which, as I mentioned, is based on the current teacher, nurse, and librarian pay schedule at the master's level. There's a difference between the current teacher, nurse, and librarian pay schedules that range from five fifty to eight twelve for elementary, middle school, and combo school counselors. And it ranges from twenty-five fifty and twenty-eight twelve for high school counselors. And that comparison is between the master's teacher scale to their current schedule. The proposed counselor's schedule will be based on the non-classroom teacher, nurse, and librarian pay schedule using the same ranges for elementary, middle school, and combo schools and the same ranges for high school counselors, meaning the five fifty and eight twelve for elementary, middle, and combo, and the twenty-five fifty and twenty-eight twelve for high schools. Before I move on to the compensation plan updates, do you have any questions about what I've presented so far? One of the first things that I do need to share with you all is that we have compression between the current teacher's salary schedule and the administrative salary schedule. As it currently stands, the starting pay for a teacher, a brand-new teacher with zero years of experience in a bachelor's is three twenty-three fifty-three. And the starting daily rate for an assistant principal is three fifteen ninety-two. It's unfortunate that teachers becoming assistant principals, they're earning more annually because they're working more days, but they are earning less on a daily rate. We have had several take a daily rate pay cut as a transition from a teacher to an assistant principal. And in an effort to fix that compression, we're proposing to increase the one oh five pay range, the minimum, midpoint, and maximum to be three twenty-four, three ninety-five, and four sixty-six. Because you're moving one pay grade within, you kind of have to shuffle everybody else after so that you don't create compression within. So since one oh six will go from three forty-one nineteen for eighteen sixty-four and four ninety-six oh nine to three forty-nine twenty-seven, four twenty-six twenty-seven, and five oh three twenty-seven. The changes for one oh seven will go from three ninety-three oh six, four seventy-nine thirty-four, five sixty-five sixty-two, to four oh one fourteen, four eighty-seven fourteen, and five seventy-three fourteen. And one oh eight will go from four thirty, forty, five twenty-four eighty-eight, six nineteen thirty-six, to four thirty-eight forty-eight, five thirty-two forty-eight, six twenty-six forty-eight. And then finally, one oh nine will go from five thirty-three sixty-seven, six forty-two ninety-eight, seven fifty-two twenty-nine, to five forty-one seventy-five, six fifty seventy-five, and seven fifty-nine seventy-five. And one ten will go from six fifty-nine oh nine, seven eighty-four oh eight, nine twenty-nine oh seven, to six sixty-seven seventeen, eight oh one seventeen, and nine thirty-five seventeen. I do want to let you know that the current structure, the pay ranges between the mid, mid, min, mid, max, I followed the same range for the increases and also the spread between each pay grade level, so I didn't deviate from what was already established. Other changes that are being proposed are due to, are an update to the recruitment stipend for special education. Originally, the stipend was created to recruit individuals from outside El Paso. However, since the implementation of that stipend, we have not paid it out to anybody. So we're shifting gears a little bit and targeting our school psychologists. That is a very high-need area, and we want to offer the five thousand dollar stipend to any newly hired school psychologist regardless of where they come from. The stipend will be paid out for one year and will be prorated if the employee leaves before the school year is up. In addition, we're adding a stipend to support teachers with higher class sizes. For elementary core teachers that will have twenty-five students or more in their classroom will qualify for a twenty-five hundred dollar stipend. We realize the added work of having more students in a classroom, so this is an effort to offer some support and incentive to those teachers. This year, we identified a total of seventy-six elementary core teachers with twenty-five-plus students in their class, and the potential budget impact is about a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Lastly, we're proposing to increase the special education BIC unit teacher stipend from two thousand to three thousand dollars. These classes are very hard to fill since it not only requires a special education certification, but also core content. And in many cases, these teachers are faced with teaching a range of grade levels within one classroom and testing requirements apply. Now, we will continue to evaluate this because we do anticipate additional special education funds that come out of this legislative session. And so we may come back next year with an increase for the following year, but for now, we're willing to add that thousand dollars for this upcoming school year. And this is the proposed salary increases with the budget impact. So classroom teachers, it's approximately twelve-point-two million dollars. And the increase will comply with HB two addressing the classroom teacher retention allotment. Non-classroom teachers, nurses, and librarians, it is a one-point-five percent increase off the market midpoint. That's approximately three hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars, and that increase will comply with HB two addressing the support staff allotment. Counselors, one-point-five percent, which is approximately two hundred and six thousand, and that increase will comply with HB two addressing the support staff allotment. For para-technology employees, para-professionals, and auxiliary, it is one-point-five off the midpoint, and that is approximately eight hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. And that increase will comply with HB two addressing the support staff allotment. For professionals, clinic staff, and professional technology staff, excuse me, it is one-point-five off the midpoint, and that's approximately two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. The increase will comply with HB two addressing support staff allotment. This also addresses the compression for those employees that were impacted within those pay range changes. And finally, administration, a one percent increase off the midpoint, which is approximately two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. The increase is outside of any HB two allotments, and this also addresses compression for those employees that are impacted. I will note that employees that are impacted by compression will receive the greater of the two. They will not receive both. So they will either receive the salary increase percentage or the compression adjustment. So I want to finalize or finish this by saying that all of these totals and what we're proposing is based on estimated allotments that we're scheduled to receive. We may need to come back if those allotments are higher than the estimates and there are specific spending requirements. So at this time, I can entertain any questions and know that I will be bringing this item back on the regular board meeting for your approval.
Ms. Stiles, just for clarification.
Yes, ma'am.
About administration on this slide we're on, where you say increase will be outside HB two?
That's correct.
Can you clarify what that means, please?
So there is not any funds coming from the legislation that will pay for that.
Okay, so that's something that will come out of our general fund?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. Teacher, number of workdays, how many workdays are in that contract?
For a classroom teacher?
Correct.
One eighty-seven.
And then for AP?
It ranges from two seventeen to two twenty-six.
And for principal?
Two twenty-six.
Okay. So I'm looking at the proposed compensation plan update where you're going from the teacher to the assistant principal. And as you shared with me, teacher is a hundred and eighty-seven days times the daily. And then for the AP, it's their daily times two seventeen.
Correct.
So looking at this proposed increase, as you mentioned, because of compression, what percentage increase is it to this daily rate?
I don't know, Ms. Masias, because I didn't go off of percentage increase. I went off of what the current starting teacher's salary rate is, so it's three twenty-three fifty-three. So I just went three twenty-four. And that's where the bachelor's, most, or all assistant principals have to have a master's degree. So I didn't even base it off of the starting rate for the teachers with a master's degree. I just went off of the teachers with a bachelor's degree. So I didn't calculate out what that percentage is. I can do that and get that to you.
Yes, you could. And I just did quick math for this assistant principal, you know, elementary, if you have the daily rate. And of course, it's, you know, the mid-range and, you know, the ranges that you have. So it looks like it's about a two-point-five percent. And I think it's pretty consistent as you go to the other slides where you have assistant director, principal pre-K eight, assistant superintendent, and so on. And I know that you mentioned that, you know, the proposed salary increase for administration would be one percent. But then looking at the compression, you did a two-point-five.
So. So not all employees will receive a compression adjustment? So I can tell you without the compression adjustment, so for example, the professionals, clinic staff, and professional technology staff, I gave you a total of two eighty. Without a compression adjustment, it's two sixty-two. So there's not that many individuals that are receiving a compression adjustment, which tells me they're comparably paid with the current, with their years of experience and how the structure is. For administration, I gave you two sixty-five, and without compression, it's one ninety. So obviously, that's where most of your assistant principals are. That's the biggest group that's being impacted. I do know of the assistant principals that we hired just this school year. Every single one of them took a pay cut on the daily rate. Again, annually, it looks like they're earning more because they're working more days. But it does create a type of compression between the teacher's scale and the administrative scale.
The information that you just shared, I would love to have it in a board update because that way we could truly see how many are impacted.
Absolutely.
And like you said, which one will use the compression, which, like I said, right now, it's it's calculated about a two percent, if not a little bit more. And then who would receive, uh, the percentage increase that you're, that you're requesting, which is the one percent?
Yes ma'am.
Um, especially, and I, I like the question that Alice, uh, mentioned is that, you know, this is truly gonna hit our bottom line as far as in the district. This is not part of, you know, of the, of HB two.
Correct.
So, um, I know that's gonna be possibly part of, you know, our budget workshop, but if you could do that, that way we have all of the information so we can make an informed decision.
Absolutely. I have that information by specifics, so I can share that with you all for, with the Friday packet.
Thank you so much for your hard work.
Yes ma'am.
Ahra, so, thank you, Ms. Stiles. This is really helpful, and I think it is a great starting point.
Yes sir. Yes.
Already in the projected budget that Mr. Solis presented last time, or would this be in addition to, uh, that budget that we looked at, uh, right as the Senate bill was passed?
I'm gonna let him answer that question.
Thank you ma'am.
Good evening, uh, David Solis, Chief Financial Officer. So the budget that I presented to you, or the proposed budget, did not include these increases. Uh, part of it is because at the time, we didn't know since the legislation had just passed. But if you remember the, if you go back to the presentation that I provided, the PowerPoint, um, that I shared with you all, uh, we anticipate that we were probably gonna get around one point nine to support the staff retention allotment, and so we would have to build that in. So, um, I think overall, I estimated that there would probably be about an additional eight point one million, uh, left over. Um, what I can tell you is when we present the budget on June twenty-fourth, um, it would only be including that additional eight million. I will have to come back sometime in July, August, once it's all, uh, once we know a little bit more to present the additional revenue that we're gonna receive for all the additional allotments, and in addition, all the additional expenses. So those are the two things that I wanted to make you all aware of. It wasn't built in, um, but we do anticipate there's gonna be a little over eight million left over to cover the seven point eight million dollar deficit, um, so, uh, we do anticipate presenting a balanced budget, but at this time, it'll, what I present on June twenty-fourth will only be the additional eight million of additional funding. I will have to come back sometime in July and August to amend the budget to reflect not only the additional, uh, revenue that we ex- revenue that we expect to receive, but also expenditures associated with those.
That's awesome, and, and I know there's gonna be some refinement, because some of this is still, you know, estimations. Uh, I just want to make sure that we're not confusing ourselves by talking about different numbers from different pots and, and different sources. If we could just continue as we refine that, to reiterate that, hey, here's how this looks, uh, because I will very easily get confused between those two, and I just want to make sure that we're all on the, on the same number set. Um, the only other thing I would ask, is Ms. Goda asked, uh, one of the other questions that I already touched on. If everything listed as outside HB two is coming out of the general fund, is, are there places where we can assume some risk with compression to look at giving support and auxiliary staff in, increase as well, while minimizing some from admin? I don't know that there is, it's just something I would like to explore. If, if it's coming out of the general fund and not directed by the state, if we could look at some other options for, for some of those folks as well.
So the, uh, support staff and auxiliary personnel are scheduled to get an increase.
Okay.
And that is covered through the allotment. So that is a requirement, and that's part of where I'm telling you I may come back if the estimation were, we've estimated it calculates a one point five percent increase. If, if once all that's kind of ironed out, and it says, oh no, you need to spend more, then we'll come back and figure out how we increase that percentage.
Yeah, and it's, yeah, if money wasn't an option, this would be an easy sell.
Correct.
But in the current situation, money is the only option, right? But trying to make sure that we can slice that up where everybody gets something would be perfect.
So that's exactly what it's outlined to, just so you know. When I say para-technology, para-professionals, and auxiliary, um, the auxiliary includes all the custodians, CNS, bus drivers, um, mechanics, that group of employees. Um, our para-technology, it's the, the, the lower end of the scale, the, the non-exempt employees, if you will, and then para-professionals are your clerical staff. Um, and then when I say professional staff, we do have the administrative-professional scale kind of built out where you have administration and professional. So you have some of those individuals that are also non-exempt employees within that, um, and then you have the professional technology group. So all of those employees are covered under that HB two to get that increase. The only thing that's outside of it is administration.
That makes me feel better, so I appreciate it.
Yes.
Thank you ma'am.
Yes sir.
Yes, I also want to thank the staff for considering something creative. Uh, one of the things that, um, will happen if it, with the shifting of enrollment throughout the year, there will be classrooms that go beyond twenty-four. And the stipen, the amount of, uh, uh, an award to a teacher that takes twenty-four, more than twenty-four students, that stipend of twenty-five hundred dollars, they put as a liability, but actually, it'll save you a lot of pain and cost, because if you don't, you're gonna have to go hi- hire a teacher in September who nobody else wanted, and you're gonna split up a classroom. And you, instead of having a great teacher with twenty-six or seven kids, now you've got a teacher with fourteen kids and a sub with thirteen kids. So I want to thank the staff for getting creative. You will have to apply for a class-sized waiver, but I think it's, uh, an opportunity to have some flexibility after the school year starts, and then by that time, you'll know how many students you're gonna have, and it can help you make some better decisions. And remember, kids don't come in packages of twenty-two. Uh, and so, that, that just gives the, the staff and the administration some flexibility to make better decisions and not cost you more money. While it's listed as a liability, it could, it could actually be a savings.
Um, if I may, um, on that note, we're offering a stipend for our teachers who have classrooms over twenty-four, um, but I, I'd like to see if maybe we can revisit that, um, to include some kind of, of support for our special, for our, our special ed units, because they're never gonna hit twenty-four because the units are very, um, specific. So even though they don't hit twenty-four, but where they might have fourteen, these fourteen students might require the, the attention and, and the assistance that we're thinking, well, it's just fourteen, they don't qualify for that, but the need in that classroom is much greater than any of us really understands. And I think it's, it's partly what I think, uh, Mr. Delgado had mentioned just a minute ago. I think it's definitely something that we need to put on the table, um, because I do know some of our SLUs, our, our students, um, are challenging, and those teachers would never be able to get that stipend. So I, I, I don't know how that would look, but if it'd be possible to keep that in mind, um, maybe take it into consideration. I know we're combining our PAS and our FLS, and so again, those classes, I know we're helping them by adding another para, but again, unfortunately, look at the dynamics of those, of those units and consider. I, I don't want them to be left out of, of that opportunity to also receive a stipend, but if we could just talk about it and see if that's a possibility.
So we did discuss that, Ms. Garda, just so you know that, um, we know that there will be an increase to the special ed, um, um-
Numbers.
Numbers allotment that we get, and so that was one of the things that we said. We may be able to evaluate and, and evaluate the current stipends that exist and maybe increase those. So, so that is something that we're, we will be looking at.
Thank you.
Yes ma'am.
Else?
I have one other question, sorry.
Yes ma'am.
Based on what I heard, you all are thinking of increasing the staffing ratios for our specialized units?
No ma'am. No.
Okay.
No.
Okay. You might want to clarify that, uh, because based on the way that I heard it, I believe there's a conception that our specialized users are gonna increase in the number of students, and to my understanding, those staffing ratios were not going to increase the number of students. Is that correct?
That's correct, ma'am. There, there is no intention to do that. I think what Ms. Garda was saying is, um, that we just consider those stipends because they will never get to twenty-five or more, so they, they would never qualify for that twenty-five hundred dollar stipend. So what she was asking is based on the specialized needs within each unit to look at possibly increasing the current stipends that they have.
Okay, not because they are gonna get more students, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, didn't mean to confuse you, love.
Anything else? Okay, thank you, Ms. Stiles.
Thank you.
By Biden, update on employee health clinic. Mr. Carmona, please.
Good evening, Board President Najera, Superintendent Mr. Vasquez, members of the board. Mario Carmona, Director of Employee Benefits and Risk Management. Uh, thank you for allowing me to bring this information to you. Uh, today, I'll be going over a presentation in respect to some information that, um, is, um, linked to our employee health clinic. And for those of you that don't already know or have not had the opportunity to visit the clinic, there is currently an onsite clinic located on Bob Mitchell, right next to, uh, Mountwood High School. So today, I'll be providing an update specifically related to Socorro, is this employee clinic? Status and services, why we're bringing this information in respect to why the change, what would be changing, what is staying the same, what is new or improved, and key dates, and next steps, and even that this is something that it's in fact entertained. And again, I want to make sure that, um, it's clear to everyone who's listening to this information that the school district continues to be committed to the well-being of every single employee and every, uh, dependent or family member who takes advantage of the benefits that are offered by the school district. We are committed to ensuring the continuity, continuity, quality, and care. And probably the first question that might come to mind is why, why the change? As you might already know, based on a recent audit conducted, if I'm not mistaken, earlier this calendar year, it's been rather difficult for administration to be able to show the return on investment in terms of what the clinic has been able to produce. In addition to that, uh, there is a limit scalability and service expansion. There is a specific number of services, or what we refer to when it comes to medical procedures, a specific procedure codes that can be offered at an onsite clinic, and that is, uh, basically what, uh, it's provided for acute care or what's relative to a primary care physician office visit. We continue to look at ways to align our current, uh, financial situation, because as you have heard, we continue to have a deficit when it comes to the health insurance or the health fund. So we look at exploring additional opportunities for a, for us to be able to find that balance and have minimal disruption. So we're looking at the opportunity to partner with a community provider, offering broader access to needed services and available technology. What would be changing? The onsite clinic potentially could turn into a near-site clinic, and the near-site clinic will be provided by a medical services provider rather than a school district. If this is something that we proceed with, the clinic closure date would be September thirtieth, and the relationship with the healthcare provider could be as early as July first. And I say could be because just like any other, uh, timeline, there is a required thirty-day notice that needs to go out to every single patient, at least to the last two years with the patients that have been seen or have gone through the clinic, they need to be notified of the change when it comes to the closure. In addition to that, they will be, uh, notified of the new provider. In this case, it would be the University Medical Center, or as we refer to it, UMC. And the new access point would be from the location on Bob Mitchell to the location of the, uh, highway over on fifteen-twenty-one Joe Battle Boulevard. What's staying the same, and this is a concern that has been brought up to our attention, we have received a few comments from, uh, the people that have been able to take advantage of the services that are provided at the clinic. And their concerns are, am I gonna be able to receive the services that I currently receive at the employee health clinic? The answer is yes. We're looking at something comparable to start with. And at this time, what we're looking at is two specific models. One, that it's a fee per service, and another one that is, um, a, a fee that is paid on an annual basis by the school district for a total of six thousand visits. We are looking into providing the same, uh, preventive screenings and wellness checks, mental health and counseling support, no increase in employee fee, which, again, this is one of the main concerns coming from the utilizers or the patients that are being seen at the clinic. And it's worth mentioning that the ten-dollar co-pay visit will remain for those employees that are enrolled in the base and premier plan. For those of us that are enrolled in the consumer-driven health plan, there is a cost share, a lot amount, so it's a different amount, and that's something that we continue to work with our consultant to make sure that we stay within the IRS guidelines. Uh, minimal cost or co-pays for other primary care services. As we know, UMC does have other services available that the clinic doesn't have right now. I'll give you an example, primary care for pediatrics. The clinic only sees patients that are four years and above. At this particular location, they do offer pediatric services. Um, so there's, there's some enhancements to what will be available, but it's important to mention that not everything that's available at this specific location will be applicable to those ten dollars. If you go beyond what's agreed with UMC, then you will pay the respective copayment or coinsurance. Pharmacy services, of course, to include delivery, and the copayment will be applicable as well. There might be some, uh, prescriptions that are, would be available at a minimal cost, if no cost, and delivery services are also available. The difference would be that this particular pharmacy is considered to be as a retail pharmacy, uh, Walgreens, CVS, UMC. Uh, how is that different from the pharmacy that the, um, school district has at this point? Is the school district's pharmacy. So what we purchase is what we make available at no cost to whomever is being rece- who has been receiving a generic prescription. So again, we're working with the potential medical provider to be able to provide the same list of medications, and of course, there'll be more, but in reference to the minimal cost or copayment, the same type of prescriptions that are offered at the, uh, onsite clinic, uh, that belongs to the school district. So what's new and, or improved, um, every so often, when we have had presentations in respect to the clinic, one of the topics that comes up is can we extend the hours? UMC does offer services Monday through Saturday from seven AM to six PM. They are offering services in terms of partnering with the school district to be able to provide a transition. On our end, in respect to the Employee Benefits Division, the Department of Human Resources, we will be hosting, uh, sessions throughout the entire school district, as we have in prior years, to be able to make sure that everyone is aware of the potential of any changes to include, uh, the near-site clinic, support by phone and email, dedicated assistance with scheduling prescriptions, and with, uh, transferring medical records to any new, uh, primary care physician or healthcare provider. Key dates and next steps. As I mentioned, um, the employee health clinic, um, is, uh, potentially closing September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five. The new provider access could potentially be July first, twenty-twenty-five. Employee, uh, information sessions could start as this month. There's no need for us to wait until, you know, this, all this becomes, uh, official. Perhaps you have already heard that, uh, there was a notification going out that the clinic was closing as of July first. And, um, as those inquiries are coming through our, our office, we're making the people who are reaching out aware that this information is not official, that the information was going to- information is not official, that the information was going to be brought forward to the board and for discussion. Employee action required would be to review the transition guide. Whatever information and tools we provide, it will be up to the, each patient or each member to participate. If they wish to, in fact, continue their services through UMC or any other healthcare provider that's available through our network, through ETNA, they can do so. And we do have someone in-house who can assist with those steps. And of course, as I mentioned earlier, contact HR, specifically the Employee Benefits Division. Our phone number is at the HR department, 937-0298. We do have a comment inbox where the team, the entire team, including myself, gets copied. And one of us will go ahead and make sure that we provide the resources that are available at that point. And any feedback from anybody, if this is something that we move forward with, we want to hear from the people that are being directly affected by the change. If they feel they're not getting the assistance they need, the resources, and/or there's a tool out there that is not working out, that we make the necessary, take the necessary steps, and make sure that we address those needs. At this time, I don't know if there's any questions or anything that I can further clarify.
Yes, sir. Sir, just for clarification purposes, this is going to be for primary care. This isn't for emergency services. It's not for urgent care, Sunday at 3:00 AM when my child's sick. This is more for that primary care mechanism, correct?
Yes, sir. And Mr. Woodcraft, thank you so much for bringing that up. Yes, if it's not an emergency, please stay away from the emergency. What we're looking at is this specific location for services that are being provided at the employee health clinic offered by Socorro ISD. Even the facility at UMC of Joe Battle does have an ER room and does have other services available right now, and will continue to develop additional services. It doesn't mean that it's all included under that $10 copayment. That's the reason why we're going to make an emphasis when we are going out to educate our population and remind them of what is part of the $10 co-pay and what is not.
Awesome. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome, sir.
Ms. Gara. Ms. Gara.
I, I do have a question. I do know that our, we haven't, prophets have not been there. And it's not fiscally responsible for us to, to keep the clinic open. However, have we informed the public, our community? Do you all think that we've prepared them well for this, this possibility? I know that the rumors are out there, of course. And I'm just wondering, how much do they know? Like, do they, are they aware of, I know we received a report that showed us, year by year, what, what kind of hit, I guess, we've taken with, with the clinic. And it's not just about that. I mean, we've received, the care that they have received is amazing. But, so, they may be seeing it as, well, we've been doing really well. I'm really happy with the care I've received at, at the clinic. But they may not have all the information. Have we made it a point to inform our community, just so that they don't get blindsided with the closure?
And Ms. Gara, not at this point. We have not, but it's part of our plan to deploy this information out. And I, you're absolutely correct. For those patients, employees who have been able to take advantage of the services, they have received great services. But unfortunately, just like everything else, there's only a limited number of appointments and services that they offer. So for those that have requested appointments and/or require a service that is not offered at the clinic, unfortunately, they, they just are without. So we're looking at other additional partners in our community to be able to enhance what is currently being offered.
Yeah. I just want to make sure that we're informing our, our, our teachers, our staff, because it is going to affect some.
And we just also want to make sure that we inform the board first through this workshop, and also bring it to the regular board meeting on the 24th, once we do formally enter into agreement. We want to make sure those were taken care of before informing the public.
Carmona, thank you for the presentation. So for our employees, it would still be $10
co-pay.
That is correct, yes, sir.
And we're extending the hours.
Correct.
So the only question I have, I guess, how do we pick UMC when there's other hospitals as well?
And this is a great question. This is a starting point. There's nothing that says that we can't, after, you know, we co-pilot any other project, just like any other project, I should say, we evaluate, we assess how things are working out. And if, of course, there's an additional community partner that can, we can take advantage of and continue to provide services to our employees and their covered dependents, I don't see why we wouldn't be able to do that as well.
Would it be possible, because one of the complaints was, it's on the east side, would it be possible to have one on the south side as well, too, since UMC has various hospitals all over El Paso?
Correct. And just, not that this is part of this conversation yet, but just to provide you with some information that we have been privy to, there is additional sites being developed, one of them being on the Horizon site on Darrington. There will be another UMC site built. But my point with this is that, yes, we can look at additional access points as we identify the need through our, our school district. Yes, sir.
Ms. Masias?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Carmona. I really liked the format of the presentation. And I, I heard you in sharing that you wanted to make sure that you shared with the board first. But as soon as possible, you know, even this presentation, making it available, you know, attaching it to, to this board workshop, so that everybody could see it, I think, that's number one. The communication plan is very important for those that especially are receiving services from our clinic. And that was my question, you know, about how many employees are receiving services. I really like that you're going to have kind of that hotline that people could email or call you with that information, maybe sharing that information with the board, because that way it'll give us the insight, you know, of questions that might come up, and proactively what you're doing to answer some of those, some of those things, and providing hopefully enhanced services for our employees. And the, the main question that I had is, what will happen with our employee clinic, or the employees at the employee clinic?
Hi, good evening, Ms. Masias. So to answer a couple of your questions, the reason why we haven't rolled it out to the staff is because there's still an approval process that has to happen. There's an agreement that we have to enter with UMC. We are bringing it to the board for the June 24th board meeting. So once we have that agreement solidified, then we will absolutely share all the details with the staff about what their options are and what's available. I know employees or patients were notified preemptively on the closure as of June 30th. And, and in the clinic's defense, the purpose behind that was, if you all had not extended the contract for Dr. Nevades through September 30th, again, I mentioned Texas Medical Board, liability to her license, liability to the district, she has to make that notification of a 30-day notice. So they were acting in preparation in the event that if something didn't happen. However, they are aware that we were coming here to ask for the amendment and, and extend the contract, so that they can kind of shift that transition period overall. The staff has been made aware. The additional clinic staff will receive a temporary agreement that also carries them through September 30th. So they all kind of know after September 30th, the clinic's closed.
Okay. And it's just, you know, that customer service that we always put our employees first, that they hear it from us. And like you said, it was preemptive, but just that, you know, that human aspect, that they understand the why, you know, possibly things were done a little bit backwards, so that we could move this forward. And, and again, the biggest piece is the communication with everyone.
And I will say, and I don't know if I'm speaking out of line with UMC, but part of what was shared with us was that they would be willing to meet with the staff and possibly take them on to still continue to provide services to our SISD employees, so that there's some type of continuation with the providers that they're familiar with. So that, that was part of the discussions that we had as well.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Stiles, Mr. Carmona, how, how quickly can we get this information out? Because as you mentioned, you know, the notification from the clinic was posted on X, formerly known as Twitter, on June 2nd. And so, you know, now for seven days a week, this information has been out there that the clinic's closing. And I know that I personally have received lots of calls and emails, wondering, you know, so the sooner that we can get that information out there. I think most importantly, you know, that even though the clinic itself will not, the Socorro clinic, there will be a continuation of services. It's not, you know, good luck finding, you know, care somewhere else. There is a plan, but even more so quickly that it's not going to be in June 30th. The transition will occur between today and September 30th, and that even after the transition, there will be a comparable place to receive, you know, current services from, you know, a, a, what I think would be another trusted provider, because it's UMC, another local provider.
So we actually have a meeting scheduled with the clinic staff tomorrow. So we'll kind of be discussing that transition period and, and have them update the notices that have gone out. And we can start to preemptively, start to create some information to go out. Again, I, I just don't want to get ahead of the approval that the board has to make.
Even if that's what the communication says?
Absolutely.
Anything else?
Mr. Najer, just for Mr. Vasquez. So, sir, in God I trust, all others bring data. So I would ask at the, the board meeting where we consider this, kind of have a, a left side, here's what we provide now, here's how many people use the clinic, here's how many beneficiaries we have, the cost. On a different side, under the proposed plan with UMC or Providence or whoever, here's what we can offer. And just kind of show that side-by-side comparison, I would, I would appreciate it.
We can take care of that, absolutely.
Mr. Wood. Sorry, Smith?
Do we know how long the contract with UMC would be?
So currently, we're going year to year, just to evaluate the services. Because again, there's two models we're looking at. If we go with the flat rate, we would pay a flat rate with, with the estimated 6,000 visits. We don't know if we'll make them. We don't know if we'll go over. So that way, we can reevaluate, and then look at what services maybe were requested or, or needed in addition to. And that way, we can reevaluate what that looks like for the following year.
Ms. Stiles, Mr. Carmona, I, I completely understand and respect you all not getting ahead of the game. And I know that the item does need to come to the board first. I know that there's been a lot of questions that have come up. And I myself have also received, you know, emails and phone calls about this particular issue. But I, I, I understand that, that it's something that, that needs to come to us first. And I, and I know that it'll be later this month. My question is, in the process of all of this, I know that right now, currently, folks who utilize the school district's health clinic, if there is, say, for example, complaints in services, I, I imagine that that's handled internally because it is an in-house clinic. I'm wondering how that would be handled if, in the case that this is, you know, transitioned over to UMC. And how would, how would us, as members of the school board, and just as a district in general, not members of the school board, but as, as, you know, you all as staff, receive those complaints, if there are any or feedback that, that is generated from, from services? Because we all know that instances happen, you know, and for whatever reason, some folks may be unsatisfied. And so I'm just wondering how that would be addressed, if it's in the plan. And if it's not, I think that's something to, to consider, and as, as that's negotiated.
Absolutely, Mr. Rodriguez. Thank you for that question. And yes, sir, just like any other service agreement, there's always performance guarantees that we look at to make sure that they're not only meeting expectations in terms of what we're requesting to be delivered for whatever fee is being paid, but also in respect to customer service, that if we're agreeing that someone will be, being reached out, and/or let's say someone needs assistance on how to go about getting a copy of their medical record from one provider to the other, or from one pharmacy to the next, absolutely. Those are things that we will look at and make sure that those are part of what the expectations are.
Thank you. And it's, it's also important to note that a couple of months ago, UMC did successfully pass a bond. And so I think that, you know, information about that to be presented, maybe to the board at, at a future meeting, would be very helpful, just to understand. I know bonds are typically for infrastructure improvements, but alongside with that comes a lot of service improvements and an expansion of other services as well. And so I think, you know, to the point that you made earlier, a new facility will be going up in the Horizon City area. So I think it's, it's important for us to explore avenues in terms of how we can capitalize on that, in those, as we enter that agreement.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And I just want one more question for clarification. You had said, Mr. Carmona, it was $10 for BASE and PREMIER, people with BASE and PREMIER. And all, you said something about cost share for consumer-driven?
Yes, ma'am.
So what, what does that mean?
Sure. So according to the IRS, someone who participates in a high deductible plan, such as the Consumer Driven Plan that we offer here at Socorro ISD, there's a different fee. So we are working right now with further clarifying that with our consultant to make sure that we stay within compliance, because the IRS states that if you're participating in a plan such as this, you have to meet the first dollar for consumption of medical care. So we just want to make sure that we still offer a, you know, a savings to our employee, for lack of a better term, but there's also a cost avoidance from the school district. So that's something that most likely we'll be bringing forward with additional details on the board schedule for the 24th.
Okay. Thank you.
Just one more thing to add. Going back to my question on regarding customer service, I think one of the items that I look at the most is intake, right? When there is a problem, there's usually an initial intake process. And I want to make sure, I'm not familiar with that internal process of, of UMC, but if there is one, I want to, I do want to make sure that, that that is informed to, to SISD employees, that they understand the process, that they are, that they have access to those forms, if there is a form, and, and that, that they are able, you know, I'm not, and that they have contact information available at their disposal, if they do wish to follow up on whatever feedback they have to provide, or any dissatisfaction or satisfaction that they have to express.
And I believe they will be presenting on the 24th, is that correct? So we'll have representatives.
Incredible.
Anything else? All right. Thank you, Mr. Carmona, Ms. Stiles.
Thank you.
Continuing then, with executive session, this meeting is to be closed for consultation with search firm consultants and for discussion of applicants for the superintendent vacancy under Texas Government Code, Section 551.074. The date is Monday, June 9th, 2025, and the time is 6:38.
But we're not just a number. Here, we're cared for, we're loved, we belong. Team SISD is a true Texas public school district that gives us unforgettable memories, traditions, experiences, and the opportunities we need to have a bright, successful future. Want to be a health professional? Once a bulldog, always a bulldog. Want to design skyscrapers? There's an empire for that. Have you heard, the early bird gets the worm? Well, that's why they fear the falcons. We don't just rise, this is Sparta. We earn our horns and trailblaze and overcome to be the first and the best. I know, I know, it sounds extra, but it's just our flex. For over 60 years, Socorro ISD has set its sights on our future with vision, innovation, investing, building, and planning to prepare us for the real world. These are our opportunities, and we will seize them.
Socorro ISD registration opens March 3rd for Kinder through 12th grade. Enrolling a district known for exceptional academics, award-winning fine arts Enroll in a district known for exceptional academics, award-winning fine arts and athletic programs and cutting-edge facilities. Our groundbreaking academies and career programs provide excellent learning opportunities. Out-of-district transfer applications are now open. Don't wait, secure your child's spot today and seize your opportunity in Team S I S D.
Socorro I S D offers uh 45 different pathways uh in C T E. Uh, we have added uh P-Techs, Pathways and Technology Early College High Schools. We have seven advanced academies and we also throughout the district offer seven early college high school uh opportunities for our students. So a lot of choices students have to make while in eighth grade so that they have a pleasant experience while in high school.
My favorite part of H P A is the fact that we get like opportunities to go outside of school and go into hospitals. So we can actually get that hands-on and like actually view um what is actually happening in the hospitals and clinicals. Since I'm interested in being an R N, I got to talk to actual RNs about their experience, where they're from. We went to U M C, we went to Providence. Um, I also got to do middle schools and elementaries. It really helps you like build that, build that understanding of how everybody's different and you have to understand and like care to their needs.
Because it is really a dream that if I was a kid, I would have never believed that I was doing all this stuff that I was doing in the program. Um, they make me feel like family, there's a sense that I don't get in any other setting. When I'm at school, I don't feel like I'm at school, I feel like I'm doing something that I want to and the day goes by quick, super quick. And it just gives that sense of well-being and family and it's really is a dream. Cause I would have never thought I would be in the position that I'm in.
Students can select up to three different programs or academies that they would like to attend. And through the lottery process, uh, they're placed in those different academies or early college high schools that they choose. We've had over 80% first selection uh offered uh for our students.
The Libertas Academy is a, a law and government program where students can learn how to be lawmakers, law officials. Learn about the government, how it was brought up and basically prepare us for the future in some sort of government professional field. My parents and I, we actually thought it was a really amazing opportunity. Even as a high school student, starting your freshman year, that you get to start learning about these career fields and. That you get to really experience it firsthand and you get to learn about these careers that you want to go into and get a step ahead of everybody else. It was just, we had to take it, it was an amazing opportunity.
The academy provides a really unique experience because it offers students the rigor of not only college, but also like kind of a taste of law school. Which is really unique, it's something that we really don't have anywhere nearby. So I think that it's really, really cool that it provides that educational opportunity, but also it provides that community. A lot of people think that we're just all business, that we don't have fun, but we really have become like a families. I really have found some amazing friends, amazing professors.
It's taken a, a huge investment, not only in uh equipment, facilities, but also in maintaining our, our teachers' credentials, getting them training. Keeping them up to date with current standards. And Socorro has always been known as a progressive district by what we offer our kids uh is uh supersedes most other school districts across the state. And I have great confidence that uh we'll continue to progress with what, what, what's leading our schools.
So our dual language program um consists of two different types of models. We have the 90/10, which is for pre-k students. And this is where the students are in a classroom with one teacher. Depending on their first language, they're going to get 90% of the instruction in English, 10% in Spanish or vice versa, 90% in Spanish, 10% in English. And then we have our 50/50 model and this is starts from Kinder all the way to fifth grade. And this is where the students have two teachers where they're learning both languages, English and Spanish. 50 and 50% of the time depending on the taught subject and language.
The dual language program is so much more than just learning to speak in another language. They learn how to read, how to write, and they learn about the other culture and how to appreciate it and. And they, they become very successful.
In order for the students to become bilingual and bilingual, they need to make sure that they are consistent with the program at least five years. Once a student completes five full years in the dual language program, then they can qualify for a Spanish high school credit. That they take with them when they're in middle school.
I think it's important to learn English and Spanish so people can feel happy that you can communicate them in Spanish or English. So when I'm older, I could, and they ask me questions in Spanish, I can answer them in Spanish and English.
We are growing our students in a very competitive global society where dualism is extremely important. In any type of uh business that you go into, not just into education. The students, we're preparing them to be global competitive citizens of society and having that dualism in their pocket is really going to open doors for them.
El conocimiento que adquieren se refleja no nada más académicamente sino también culturalmente, socialmente. Ellos aprenden de culturas diferentes, aprenden a convivir con personas que son diferentes a ellos. Y luego yo pienso que eso también los ayuda a sentirse aceptados, aceptar a otros. Y es un programa bien bonito, me encanta.
Yo me siento feliz porque soy en dos lenguajes. Van a tener dos, dos maestras, van a aprender dos lenguajes. Y van a tener muy muchos, muchos amigos que hablan español y inglés.
I can say that S I S D is truly the district that offers many opportunities for our students. And I vouch that dual language is not just opening doors for our students to become bilingual and bilingual, but it's opening doors for their future.
Socorro I S D makes learning innovative. We fly drones, we take center stage, we take care of the environment and we learn to take care of our health and become lifelong learners. Our new elementary academies offer unique programs to inspire, challenge and prepare us for success. Register now at sisd.net and seize your opportunity in Team S I S D.
The Socorro Independent School District is committed to helping all students find their voice and achieve their highest potential. We understand the important role that families play in our children's education and we welcome you, our military-connected families, to Team S I S D. With 46 schools designated Purple Star campuses by the Texas Education Agency, the most of any school district in the El Paso region. Team S I S D is committed to supporting the unique needs of military-connected students and their families through a variety of resources and services. These include a comprehensive website for military families, a campus transition program, multiple special events, military family life counselors. And a military liaison at each of our 51 campuses who all reach out and serve our military-connected families. Team S I S D stays in close contact with our Fort Bliss counterparts to access and share information, ideas and trainings. To provide the best education for our 6,500-plus military-connected students. To assist with the social and emotional needs of our students, we maximize support services by engaging with our school counselors, including our military and family life counselor. And local agencies such as NAMI, the Y W C A, Child Guidance Center, local daycare providers. And the Paso del Norte and Meadows Family Leadership Council. We value and greatly appreciate the sacrifice our military parents make for our country, our community and our children. We salute you and we are delighted to have the opportunity to serve you and your family in our district. Thank you for being part of our district and helping us ensure that Team S I S D is the right choice for endless opportunities. Hello and welcome to S I S D TV News, where we deliver the latest news about the Socorro Independent School District. In our top story, the Socorro Independent School District hosted the 2025 S I S D Teacher of the Year Elite Eight Reception at the Technology Service Center. All S I S D Campus Teachers of the Year were honored with a special token of appreciation commemorating their achievement. And the top Elite Eight finalists were announced during the special ceremony.
The words can't describe the gratitude that I have to the district, to my campus, to my administration team, to my colleagues, to my wife, my family. Just very, very blessed, overwhelming feeling of just, you know, gratefulness.
You're always trying to like just say your name in your brain over and over and over and then you actually see it and then it's like, oh my gosh! And you're just uh shocked, shocked that out of all the 50 teachers, you're one of the top eight selected.
Dr. Ignacio Astorga, Principal at Socorro High School, was named the District Nine Administrator of the Year at this year's District Nine Spring Conference at America's High School. The purpose of District Nine is to develop leadership abilities in students and advisors, promote democracy as a way of life. And establish and uphold high standards for local school councils.
It's a hard work of everybody, it's a culmination of not just the, the faculty and staff, but of what our students do and what our expectations are of our kids. And our expectations should be high for any school that we're at. And our, and if you challenge the kids, they will reach that challenge and that's what our kids have done, they have reached that challenge. And this is just a culmination of everything, so this award's not for me, it's for Socorro High School and our kids.
I was so honored that Ms. Lopez reached out to me to write a letter of rec for him. He has been my principal since the beginning of freshman year, so throughout this whole journey, I have been with him. Nothing but support from him and anything we have given of ideas or anything that we have need, he has supported us 100%. And no doubt in anything that we can do, writing the letter of recommendation for him felt so natural, anything came out. And just describing him as a wonderful principal was amazing to do and I know he supports a student council, so to put him in a D nine level was just an amazing experience to do and I'm so glad. Not only myself, but the rest of my council could help and surprise him. It was hard getting him out here because he knows everything that goes on in our campus. So a little lie to get him here, I was totally okay with it. And seeing his surprise and seeing his reaction just made my day and my year to make him a D nine Administrator of the Year.
The American Federation of Teachers gave away over 1,000 books to students and teachers of all grade levels at Colonel Ben Narbith Elementary School. As part of the Reading Opens the World Initiative with First Book.
We believe in giving back to our community much-needed resources to make sure that our students succeed. We like to give them away and make sure that there's plenty opportunities for our kids to be successful and thrive.
It's a whole other world, it opens up a whole new world for our students and uh, and for them to get, just get away from the TV and the social media. And just sit down with a, with a good book and enjoy that, uh, they're, uh, they're really excited about it.
I always suggest other kids to read because it can help them be like super smart. They can learn how to pronounce uh bigger words.
Socorro I S D Interim Superintendent James Vasquez surprised the top four school support employee of the year finalists with a special gift and visited each of their campuses and departments. Francisco Felix Martinez is the head custodian at Mission Early College High School.
For me, the most important thing is that I'm part of a bigger thing that, than all of us. And what it is for me is that having a clean classroom, clean restrooms and to see those kids that are, the students that are happy and when they graduate. And they graduate from college is something that is priceless to me because I'm part of it and I'm making a difference for, for my campus.
Armando Álvarez is a crosswalk monitor at Loma Verde Elementary School.
I couldn't believe it though, you know, I, I didn't think you were coming to see me, like I said earlier though. I was just like doing my regular stuff like I always do, try to help the kids, uh, make sure that they have their food and everything, but I am really surprised.
Jesús Salas is the head custodian for the Department of Athletics.
I feel so proud myself and I feel so proud of the team that we work here in the Athletics Department and to be recognized it like, it's awesome guys. Uh, also I feel like um the district, like the whole district employees, all custodians, I'm representing that not only my, my facility, I'm representing like. Maintenance and operations at all, you know, so I feel, feel amazing.
And Deney Muñoz is the Campus Secretary at Specialist Rafael Hernando III Middle School.
We have an amazing team here and I, they're my babies, my, the team here is literally my baby and just to see my team out here in the front supporting me. When I'm the one that supports them all the time, it's just so fulfilling, it's, it's really just an emotion that's so fulfilling.
The University of Texas at El Paso awarded excellent scholarships to 38 students from America's High School and 19 students from Montwood High School. The scholarships that range from $2,000 to $8,000 will allow students to pursue their dreams of higher education at UTEP.
It goes beyond just that you pick up the ranking, that they do so many things, the family dynamics are so complex. Uh, and there are students that sometimes they never thought of getting a scholarship and only like smart students, no, everything matters. So you will have students, you will have parents, for the first time, they're going to be talking about more than just financially, they're going to be talking about. My son, my daughter is getting a scholarship, a UTEP Excellence Scholarship and we're so proud of that.
I feel really good about myself because um, and during like the previous years, I was kind of like down about my grades, but like I got them up. And knowing that I got this scholarship like just gives me that peace of mind.
This is just an exciting opportunity, um, relieving this financial burden is just something that everyone is looking for. I believe being able to be a recipient of the scholarship is something so honorable. Um, UTEP was the university I was planning on attending, so just having that uh leverage on, on that concern of like, well, how am I going to pay for this? Or, and all that, like just it going away is something that I'm grateful to receive as a person.
I'm actually really excited, I didn't know it was happening, I thought this was like an information thing, like they'd be like, oh, like you're a finalist, but you have to do this, this and this to win it. I didn't know we were going to win, but I'm actually really excited.
The Libertas Academy for Law, Government and Public Administration was awarded the Haddon Summers Civic Foundation Grant for the ninth year in a row. This grant allows students to learn about civics during their spring break and introduces incoming eighth graders to the Advanced Academic Academy. This year's focus was the First Amendment.
We use that topic because I think the, the kids find it very interesting, but it also allows them an opportunity to understand the concept of researching, the concepts of looking at court decisions. And then to keeping updated with, you know, current decisions, with how it works. And then we also gave them an insight of to, you know, what are their rights on the school campus? Because they think that they have unlimited rights and it gives them an opportunity to see how, you know, Supreme Court decisions, local decisions also impact their daily lives.
I feel like it's going to give me a head start at life mostly and it's going to help me advance in school, help me with a lot of different things.
I mean, I already know about the First Amendment, but it goes so deep into detail about like our freedoms and stuff and the court cases about the First Amendment.
Team S I S D sophomores, juniors and seniors explored future career options at the Annual College Career and Job Expo at Montwood High School. Students got the opportunity to speak with college, technical school representatives and meet with local business and industry partners to learn about possible opportunities available to them. Such as internships or employment opportunities.
The uh reality of our students going to school without working is uh, it's, it's been an issue here in El Paso and nationwide now. Information provided about our state's graduation rates, UTEP's graduation rates are up, but they're still at a six-year 42% graduation rate. Which means our, our kids who are going to school at UTEP, they're, they're taking time to go there and they're most likely working, supporting the family and, and paying bills as they're going to school. So they leave our schools with uh college credits as well as skills to help them find a higher-paying job. They probably don't have to work so much to be able to achieve their goals in a quicker time period.
I really like it and everybody was super helpful about their tip with interviews and over. with interviews and overall, it was super nice. I've been trying to look for more of a better job that pays better, obviously, because I'm about to graduate high school, and I need to start looking for a better job.
Coming here made me realize like a lot. Like you can benefit for so much just by showing up, asking questions, and asking around, like how does this work and stuff like that? So yeah, it's really beneficial. And going to summer, I do want to look for, again, internships or jobs or whatnot, make that like little money on the extra side, and again, take that like big step next in life, you know?
That's our show for today. I hope you've enjoyed learning about the latest in the Socorro Independent School District. Make sure to follow us on X with the handle @socorroisd. Also, be sure to friend us on Facebook, subscribe to our YouTube channel, Team SISD, and visit our website. Thank you again, and see you next time. Hello and welcome to SISD TV News, where we deliver the latest news about the Socorro Independent School District. In our top story, Team SISD High Schools officially launched the Region 19 Girls Flag Football Pilot Championship in partnership with the Dallas Cowboys and the Houston Texans. The schools participated in a blind draft to determine the team they will be affiliated with.
This opportunity is for those female athletes. I think of my own daughter when we talk about this. And so we just want to make sure that they have an opportunity to participate in a growing sport. There are scholarship opportunities. Some of the schools, smaller schools across the nation, are offering scholarships for it. So it's just another opportunity to showcase the amazing female athletes we have in the El Paso region.
I'm just really excited to get to, you know, learn as a coach and then help the girls learn and, you know, be football players. Like that's just something that we're going to learn together. And I think it's going to be a really great experience, and then hopefully expand it to UIL. I mean, that's going to be amazing.
It's truly their opportunity. They deserve the right to go compete. Football is the greatest sport, in my opinion, in this world. And so we do so much for our men. We go above and beyond for our men. Tackle and all these different things, 7-on-7 for our boys. It's our opportunity, it's our duty to make sure that we give those same opportunities and we give the same energy, we give the same effort to our young ladies because they deserve it, they've earned it, and it's just their time.
Students from Socorro ISD's six comprehensive high schools participated in Career Con XXL at Eastlake High School. Students had the opportunity to have one-on-one conversations with employers, learn about exciting career paths, and get advice on taking the necessary steps towards their dream job.
This is one of two Career Con events we have. All of our sophomores take a Financial Literacy class, and it's a semester course. So we have a Job Con or Career Con in the fall for about 1,800 students. And we have one again in the spring for approximately 1,800 students. And Financial Literacy, we cover three different areas, personal financial literacy, as well as college readiness and career readiness. Students create their endorsement when they're eighth grade. They revisit it when they're a sophomore. The last time they can change their endorsement is by the start of their junior year. So it's prime time for the kids to prep for college courses and also to review their endorsement and review the different careers that they can prepare for while in high school.
We get to like experience all these type of careers that we could like go into the future. Like we have different options on which jobs we could participate. We have different options we can explore. Because not everybody likes the same job, and not everybody's going to have the same job. So we just get to experience the different careers.
It helps a lot like with people who aren't really sure like what they want to do after high school. And it just helps me like be aware of like what are my options and like what exactly like the jobs are into detail.
Team SISD's Project Search program hosted a Coffee Connections event where students with developmental disabilities can find a job and gain work experience. Students were able to talk to and network with possible employers who are looking to hire.
It started off initially as a networking event just to get the program out there and have the students highlight their many skill sets. However, as you've seen today, it has evolved more into a reverse job where these students are prepared to be interviewed. They have resumes in hand. They're highlighting the many skill sets to today's employers that got invited.
It feels amazing. And scary because this is your first time.
Project Search has always been a big program for me that I love to just volunteer like on my personal time. And these kids are amazing. So here like at Rice Federal Credit Inn, we are looking for the next diamond like in the rough. And we feel that these kids are going to be those diamonds up in the rough.
Pebble Hills High School student athletes, Dorian Jaramillo and Sarian Quarles signed their letters of intent to play football and further their education at Tyler Junior College and Siskel College.
I picked Siskel because it makes me feel like I'm at home. Like they make me feel comfortable with who I am. I mean, I'm a little nervous, but I'm excited, I'm happy.
TJC, I chose them because they're a great junior college. They're one of the best in the conference and the nation. And they're really good at developing football players and getting them to the next level, to Division One, which is where I want to be. And I really like the coaching staff and the city. So it's a really good place.
Socorro ISD students demonstrated how technology has enhanced their educational experiences and equipped them with the skills to succeed in a digital world at the Annual Academic Technology Showcase at the District Service Center. The district-wide event welcomes students from all grade levels to compete, showcasing their technology skills, creativity, critical thinking, communication, and teamwork.
We cannot do this without the support of the teachers and the enthusiasm that they have in their classrooms every day. And that's what translates into the energy that you're seeing today because it's evidence that kids are enjoying their learning and that they're excited about using technology in their classrooms. So when they get an opportunity to showcase their work, that's fulfilling the mission of this great event that we actually give them an opportunity to show to the community all of the wonderful things that they're getting to experience and be a part of in our district.
It feels amazing. I love it so much. I think that it gives me one foot in front of the door when it comes to going to college and stuff like that.
I think it's great. I think it's a really big opportunities for kids, you know, to get to, they get to experience, you know, different topics, different things. And I feel like that's great because my child gets to experience it, and I just think that's great.
The Socorro Independent School District hosted its third annual Black History Month Art Contest at the District Service Center. 300 students from districts around the region showcased their art pieces of African-Americans in labor.
If we fail to storytell, if we fail to acknowledge what, you know, horrible things have happened in history and how we have overcome, then we're doomed to repeat that. And so for these kids from elementary to high school, it's super important that they know these stories and that, you know, we've done things to make people's lives better for a reason. And so, I mean, what greater avenue to combine art and history?
But it starts with the foundation of knowing what the history is about. So learning the history, knowing where we have come from, give them a better picture of where we are going. So just excited to see their creativity and all of the hard work they did and learning about these subjects for their artwork.
I'm really happy, I'm really proud of myself. I like how, I like that I get to show my parents what I can do. And just like I like to show everyone what I can do.
America's high school student athletes signed their letters of intent to play and further their education at the next level. Isaac Arieta will further his education and play baseball at El Paso Community College.
I'm just excited to just continue my career. I mean, it's a big thing. Since I was little, I've been wanting to play.
Isabella Núñez will be attending Grand Canyon University, where she will continue to play volleyball.
I'm super excited. It's a great school, and I can't wait.
Gisela Vázquez will continue to run track and cross-country at the University of West Virginia State.
I feel excited, a little nervous, but it's like a good thing.
Visit sisd.net to get the complete list of students who have committed to furthering their education while continuing to pursue their athletic passion at the collegiate level. That's our show for today. I hope you've enjoyed learning about the latest in the Socorro Independent School District. Make sure to follow us on X with the handle @socorroisd. Also, be sure to friend us on Facebook, subscribe to our YouTube channel, Team SISD, and visit our website. Thank you again, and see you next time. This past year has tested us in ways we've never imagined. From navigating uncertainty to overcoming challenges, each of us has played a crucial role in keeping our community strong and resilient. Through it all, one thing has remained clear: our commitment to our students' success. As we reflect on the challenges we faced, we recognize the strength of our unity and the power of being all-in. Being all-in means more than just showing up. It means giving our best every day, supporting each other, and fostering an environment where every student can thrive. It's about going the extra mile, finding solutions together, and lifting each other up during difficult times. Those who are all-in inspire others. They show us what's possible when we refuse to settle for mediocrity. They remind us that greatness lies not in the outcome, but in the journey. The journey of pushing boundaries, overcoming setbacks, and becoming stronger with every step. So as we face the new school year, remember this: life rewards those who are willing to give it their all. Whether you're pursuing a dream, facing a challenge, or simply striving to be the best, choose to be all-in. Because when you are all-in, you're a champion for all of us: students, employees, parents, and families. We are all-in for Team SISD.
Socorro Independent School District has more than 48,000 students and 51 campuses. But we're not just a number. Here, we're cared for, we're loved, we belong. Team SISD is a true Texas public school district that gives us unforgettable memories, traditions, experiences, and the opportunities we need to have a bright, successful future. Want to be a health professional? Want to bulldog? Always a bulldog. Want to design skyscrapers? It's an empire for that. Have you heard, "The early bird gets the worm"? Well, that's why they fear the falcons. We don't just rise, this is Sparta. We earn our horns and trailblaze and overcome to be the first and the best. I know, I know, it sounds extra, but it's just our flex. For over 60 years, Socorro ISD has set its sights on our future with vision, innovation, investing, building, and planning to prepare us for the real world. These are our opportunities, and we will seize them.
Socorro ISD registration opens March 3 for kinder through 12th grade. Enroll in a district known for exceptional academics, award-winning fine arts and athletic programs, and cutting-edge facilities. Our groundbreaking academies and career programs provide excellent learning opportunities. Out-of-district transfer applications are now open. Don't wait. Secure your child's spot today and seize your opportunity in Team SISD.
Socorro ISD offers 45 different pathways in CTE. We have added PTEx, Pathways and Technology Early College High Schools. We have seven advanced academies. And we also, throughout the district, offer seven early college high school opportunities for our students. So a lot of choices students have to make while in eighth grade so that they have a pleasant experience while in high school.
My favorite part of HPA is the fact that
My favorite part of HPA is the fact that we get like opportunities to go outside of school and go into hospitals so we can actually get that hands-on and like actually view what is actually happening in the hospitals and clinicals. Since I'm interested in being an RN, I got to talk to actual RNs about their experience, where they're from. We went to UMC, we went to Providence. I also got to do middle schools and elementaries. It really helps you like build that, build that understanding of how everybody's different and you have to understand and like care to their needs.
Because it is really a dream that if I was a kid, I would have never believed that I was doing all this stuff that I was doing in the program. They make me feel like family. There's a sense that I don't get in any other setting. When I'm at school, I don't feel like I'm at school. I feel like I'm doing something that I want to and the day goes by quick, super quick. And it just gives that sense of well-being and family. And it really is a dream because I would have never thought I would be in the position that I'm in.
Students can select up to three different programs or academies that they would like to attend. And through the lottery process, they're placed in those different academies or early college high schools that they choose. We've had over 80% first selection offered for our students.
The Libertad Academy is a law and government program where students can learn how to be lawmakers, law officials, learn about the government, how it was brought up, and basically prepare us for the future in some sort of government professional field. My parents and I, we actually thought it was a really amazing opportunity. Even as a high school student, starting your freshman year, that you get to start learning about these career fields and that you get to really experience it firsthand and you get to learn about these careers that you want to go into and get a step ahead of everybody else. It was just, we had to take it. It was an amazing opportunity.
The academy provides a really unique experience because it offers students the rigor of not only college, but also like kind of a taste of law school, which is really unique. It's something that we really don't have anywhere nearby. So I think that it's really, really cool that it provides that educational opportunity, but also it provides that community. A lot of people think that we're just all business, that we don't have fun, but we really have become like a family. I really have found some amazing friends, amazing professors.
It's taken a huge investment, not only in equipment, facilities, but also in maintaining our teachers' credentials, getting them training, keeping them up to date with current standards. Socorro has always been known as a progressive district by what we offer our kids is, supersedes most other school districts across the state. And I have great confidence that we'll continue to progress with what's leading our schools.
So dual-language program consists of two different types of models. We have the 90-10, which is for pre-k students. And this is where the students are in a classroom with one teacher. Depending on their first language, they're going to get 90% of the instruction in English, 10% in Spanish, or vice versa, 90% in Spanish, 10% in English. And then we have our 50-50 model. And this starts from kinder all the way to 5th grade. And this is where the students have two teachers where they're learning both languages, English and Spanish. 50% of the time, depending on the taught subject and language.
The dual-language program is so much more than just learning to speak in another language. They learn how to read, how to write, and they learn about the other culture and how to appreciate it. And they become very successful.
In order for the students to become bilingual and bilingual, they need to make sure that they are consistent with the program at least five years. Once a student completes five full years in the dual-language program, then they can qualify for a Spanish high school credit that they take with them when they're in middle school.
I think it's important to learn English and Spanish so people can feel happy that you can communicate them in Spanish or English. So when I'm older, I could, and they ask me questions in Spanish, I can answer them in Spanish and English.
We are growing our students in a very competitive global society where dualism is extremely important in any type of business that you go into, not just into education. The students will prepare them to be global, competitive citizens of society. And having that dualism in their pocket is really going to open doors for them.
El conocimiento que adquieren se refleja no nada más académicamente, sino también culturalmente, socialmente. Ellos aprenden de culturas diferentes, aprenden a convivir con personas que son diferentes a ellos. Y luego yo pienso que eso también los ayuda a sentirse aceptados, aceptar a otros. Y es un programa bien bonito, a mí me encanta.
Pues yo me siento feliz porque soy en dos lenguajes. Van a tener dos maestras, van a aprender dos lenguajes. Y van a tener muchos amigos que hablan español y inglés.
I can say that SISD is truly the district that offers many opportunities for our students. And I vouch that dual language is not just opening doors for our students to become bilingual and bilingual, but it's opening doors for their future.
Socorro ISD makes learning innovative. We fly drones, we take center stage, we take care of the environment, and we learn to take care of our health and become lifelong learners. Our new elementary academies offer unique programs to inspire, challenge, and prepare us for success. Register now at sisd.net and seize your opportunity in Team SISD.
The Socorro Independent School District is committed to helping all students find their voice and achieve their highest potential. We understand the important role that families play in our children's education, and we welcome you, our military-connected families, to Team SISD. With 46 schools designated Purple Star campuses by the Texas Education Agency, the most of any school district in the El Paso region, Team SISD is committed to supporting the unique needs of military-connected students and their families through a variety of resources and services. These include a comprehensive website for military families, a campus transition program, multiple special events, military family life counselors, and a military liaison at each of our 51 campuses who all reach out and serve our military-connected families. Team SISD stays in close contact with our Fort Bliss counterparts to access and share information, ideas, and trainings to provide the best education for our 6,500-plus military-connected students. To assist with the social and emotional needs of our students, we maximize support services by engaging with our school counselors, including our military and family life counselor and local agencies such as NAMI, the YWCA, Child Guidance Center, local daycare providers, and the Paso del Norte and Meadows Family Leadership Council. We value and greatly appreciate the sacrifice our military parents make for our country, our community, and our children. We salute you, and we are delighted to have the opportunity to serve you and your family in our district. Thank you for being part of our district and helping us ensure that Team SISD is the right choice for endless opportunities. Hello and welcome to SISD TV News, where we deliver the latest news about the Socorro Independent School District. In our top story, the Socorro Independent School District hosted the 2025 SISD Teacher of the Year Elite Eight Reception at the Technology Service Center. All SISD campus teachers of the year were honored with a special token of appreciation commemorating their achievement, and the top Elite Eight finalists were announced during the special ceremony.
The words can't describe the gratitude that I have to the district, to my campus, to my administration team, to my colleagues, to my wife, my family. Just very, very blessed, overwhelming feeling of just, you know, gratefulness.
You're always trying to like just say your name in your brain over and over and over, and then you actually see it, and then it's like, oh my gosh! And you're just shocked, shocked that out of all the 50 teachers, you're one of the top eight selected.
Dr. Ignacio Astorga, principal at Socorro High School, was named the District Nine Administrator of the Year at this year's District Nine Spring Conference at America's High School. The purpose of District Nine is to develop leadership abilities in students and advisors, promote democracy as a way of life, and establish and uphold high standards for local school councils.
It's a hard work of everybody. It's a culmination of not just the faculty and staff, but of what our students do and what our expectations are of our kids. And our expectations should be high for any school that we're at. And if you challenge the kids, they will reach that challenge. And that's what our kids have done, they have reached that challenge. And this is just a culmination of everything. So this award's not for me, it's for Socorro High School and our kids.
I was so honored that Ms. Lopez reached out to me to write a letter of rec for him. He has been my principal since the beginning of freshman year. So throughout this whole journey, I have been with him, nothing but support from him. And anything we have given of ideas or anything that we need, he has supported us 100% and no doubt in anything that we can do. Writing the letter of recommendation for him felt so natural. Anything came out, and just describing him as a wonderful principal was amazing to do. And I know he supports a student council, so to put him in a D9 level was just an amazing experience to do. And I'm so glad, not only myself, but the rest of my council could help and surprise him. It was hard getting him out here because he knows everything that goes on in our campus. So a little lie to get him here, I was totally okay with it. And seeing his surprise and seeing his reaction just made my day and my year to make him a D9 Administrator of the Year.
The American Federation of Teachers gave away over 1,000 books to students and teachers of all grade levels at Colonel Ben Narbith Elementary School as part of the Reading Opens the World Initiative with First Book.
We believe in giving back to our community much-needed resources to make sure that our students succeed. We like to give them away and make sure that there's plenty opportunities for our kids to be successful and thrive.
It's a whole other world. It opens up a whole new world for our students. And for them to just get away from the TV and the social media and just sit down with a good book and enjoy that, they're really excited about it.
I would suggest that kids read because it can help them be like super smart. They can learn how to pronounce bigger words.
Socorro ISD interim superintendent James Vázquez surprised the top four school support employee of the year finalists with a special gift and visited each of their campuses and departments. Francisco Felix Martinez is the head custodian at Mission Early College High School.
For me, the most important thing is that I'm part of a bigger thing than all of us. And what it is for me is that having a clean classroom, clean restrooms, and to see those kids, the students that are happy when they graduate and they graduate from college is something that is priceless to me because I'm part of it. And I'm making a difference for my campus.
Armando Álvarez is a crosswalk monitor at Loma Verde Elementary School.
I couldn't believe it though, you know? I didn't think you were coming to see me, like I said earlier though. I was just like doing my regular stuff like I always do, try to help the kids, make sure that they have their food and everything. But I am really surprised.
Jesús Salas is the head custodian for the Department of Athletics.
I feel so proud myself, and I feel so proud of the team that we work here in the ladies department. And to be recognized, like, it's awesome, guys. Also, I feel like the district, like the whole district employees, all custodians, I'm representing that, not only my facility, I'm representing like maintenance and operations at all, you know? So I feel amazing.
And Dené Muñoz is the campus secretary at Specialist Rafael Hernando III Middle School.
We have an amazing team here, and they're my babies. The team here is literally my baby. And just to see my team out here in the front supporting me when I'm the one that supports them all the time, it's just so fulfilling. It's really just an emotion that's so fulfilling.
The University of Texas at El Paso awarded excellent scholarships to 38 students from America's High School and 19 students from Montwood High School. The scholarships that range from $2,000 to $8,000 will allow students to pursue their dreams of higher education at UTEP.
It goes beyond just that you pay of the ranking, that they do so many things. The family dynamics are so complex. And there are students that sometimes they never thought of getting a scholarship and only like smart students, no, everything matters. So you will have students, you will have parents that for the first time, they're going to be talking about more than just financially. They're going to be talking about, my son, my daughter is getting a scholarship, a UTEP Excellent Scholarship, and we're so proud of that.
I feel really good about myself because during like the previous years, I was kind of like down about my grades, but like I got them up. And knowing that I got this scholarship like just gives me that peace of mind.
This is just an exciting opportunity. Relieving this financial burden is just something that everyone is looking for. I believe being able to be a recipient of the scholarship is something so honorable. UTEP was the university I was planning on attending. So just having that leverage on that concern of like, how am I going to pay for this and all that? Like just it going away is something that I'm grateful to receive as a person.
I'm actually really excited. I didn't know it was happening. I thought this was like an information thing. Like they'd be like, oh, like you're a finalist, but you have to do this, this, and this to win it. I didn't know we were going to win, but I'm actually really excited.
The Libertad Academy for Law, Government, and Public Administration was awarded the Haddon Summers Civic Foundation Grant for the ninth year in a row. This grant allows students to learn about civics during their spring break and introduces incoming 8th graders to the Advanced Academic Academy. This year's focus was the First Amendment.
We use that topic because I think the kids find it very interesting. But it also allows them an opportunity to understand the concept of researching, the concepts of looking at court decisions, and then keeping updated with, you know, current decisions, with how it works. And then we also gave them an insight of to, you know, what are their rights on the school campus? Because they think that they have unlimited rights, and it gives them an opportunity to see how, you know, Supreme Court decisions, local decisions also impact their daily lives.
I feel like it's going to give me a head start at life mostly. And it's going to help me advance in school, help me with a lot of different things.
I mean, I already know about the First Amendment, but it goes so deep into detail about like our freedoms and stuff and the court cases about the First Amendment.
Team SISD sophomores, juniors, and seniors explored future career options at the Annual College Career and Job Expo at Montwood High School. Students got the opportunity to speak with college, technical school representatives, and meet with local business and industry partners to learn about possible opportunities available to them such as internships or employment opportunities.
The reality of our students going to school without working is it's been an issue here in El Paso and nationwide now. Information provided about our states, graduation rates. UTEP's graduation rates are up, but they're still at a six-year, 42% graduation rate, which means our kids who are going to school at UTEP, they're taking time to go there, and they're most likely working, supporting the family, and paying bills as they're going to school. So they leave our schools with college credits as well as skills to help them find a higher-paying job. They probably don't have to work so much to be able to achieve their goals in a quicker time period.
I really liked it, and everybody was super helpful about their tip with interviews, and overall it was super nice. I've been trying to look for more of a better job that pays better, obviously, because I'm about to graduate high school, and I need to start looking for a better job.
Coming here made me realize like a lot, like you can do, you can benefit for so much just by showing up, asking questions, and asking around, like how does this work and stuff like that? So yeah, it's really beneficial. And going to summer, I do want to look for, again, internships or jobs or whatnot. Make that like little money on the extra side and again, take that like big step next in life, you know?
That's our show for today. I hope you've enjoyed learning about the latest in the Socorro Independent School District. Make sure to follow us on X with the handle @socorroISD. Also be sure to friend us on Facebook, subscribe to our YouTube channel, Team SISD, and visit our website. Thank you again and see you next time. Hello and welcome to SISD TV News, where we deliver the latest news about the Socorro Independent School District. In our top story, Team SISD High Schools officially launched the Region 19 Girls' Flag Football Pilot Championship in partnership with the Dallas Cowboys and the Houston Texans. The schools participated in a blind draft to determine the team they will be affiliated with.
This opportunity is for those female athletes, I think of my own daughter when we talk about this, and so we just want to make sure that they have an opportunity to participate in a growing sport. There are scholarship opportunities, some of the schools, smaller schools across the nation are offering scholarships for it. So it's just another opportunity to showcase the amazing female athletes we have in the El Paso region.
I'm just really excited to get to, you know, learn as a coach and then help the girls learn and, you know, be football players. Like, that's just something that we're going to learn together and I think it's going to be a really great experience and then hopefully expand it to UIL. Amen. That's going to be amazing.
It's truly their opportunity. They deserve the right to go compete. Football is the greatest sport, in my opinion, in this world and so, and so, we do, we do so much for our men. We go above and beyond for our men, tackle and all these different things, 7-on-7 for our boys. It's our opportunity, it's our duty to make sure that we give those same opportunities and we give the same energy, we give the same effort to our young ladies because they deserve it, they've earned it, and it's just their time.
Students from Socorro ISD's six comprehensive high schools participated in Career Con XXL at Eastlake High School. Students had the opportunity to have one-on-one conversations with employers, learn about exciting career paths, and get advice on taking the necessary steps towards their dream job.
This is one of two Career Con events we have. We, all of our sophomores take a Financial Literacy class and it's a semester course, so we have a Job Con or Career Con in the fall for about 1,800 students and we have one again in the spring for approximately 1,800 students. And Financial Literacy, we cover three different areas, personal financial literacy, as well as college readiness and career readiness. Students create their endorsement when they're eighth grade, they revisit it when they're a sophomore, the last time they can change their endorsement is by the start of their junior year. So it's prime time for the kids to prep for college courses and also to review their endorsement and review the different careers that they can prepare for while in high school.
We get to like, experience all these type of careers that we could, like, go into the future, like, we have different options on which, which jobs we could participate, we have different options we can explore, because not everybody likes the same job and not everybody's going to have the same job, so we just get to experience the different careers.
It helps a lot, like, with people who aren't really sure, like, what they want to do after high school and just helps me like, be aware of like, what are my options and like, what exactly, like, the jobs are into detail.
Team SISD's Project Search program hosted a Coffee Connections event where students with developmental disabilities can find a job and gain work experience. Students were able to talk to and network with possible employers who are looking to hire.
It started off initially as a networking event, just to get the program out there and have the students highlight their many skill sets. However, as you've seen today, it has evolved more into a reverse job where these students are prepared to be interviewed, they have resumes in hand, they're highlighting their many skill sets to today's employers that got invited.
It feels amazing and scary because this is, because this is your first time.
Project Search has always been a big program for me that I love to just volunteer like, on my personal time and these kids are amazing. So here like, at Rice Federal Credit, we are looking for the next diamond like, in the rough and we feel that these kids are going to be those diamonds that come in the rough.
Pebble Hills High School Student Athletes Dorian Harameyo and Sarian Quarles signed their letters of intent to play football and further their education at Tyler Junior College and Sisco College.
I picked Sisco because it makes me feel like I'm at home, like, they make me feel comfortable with who I am. I mean, I'm a little nervous, but I'm excited, I'm happy.
TJC, I chose them because they're a great junior college, they're one of the best in the conference in the nation and they're really good at developing football players and getting them to the next level to Division One, which is where I want to be and I really like the coaching staff and the city, so it's a really good place.
Socorro ISD students demonstrated how technology has enhanced their educational experiences and equipped them with the skills to succeed in a digital world at the Annual Academic Technology Showcase at the District Service Center. The district-wide event welcomes students from all grade levels to compete, showcasing their technology skills, creativity, critical thinking, communication, and teamwork.
We cannot do this without the support of the teachers and the enthusiasm that they have in their classrooms every day and that's what translates into the energy that you're seeing today because it's evidence that kids are enjoying their learning and that they're excited about using technology in their classrooms. So when they get an opportunity to showcase their work, that's fulfilling the mission of this great event, that we actually give them an opportunity to show to the community all of the wonderful things that they're getting to experience and take a fair part of in our district.
It feels amazing. I love it so much. I think that it gives me one foot in front of the door when it comes to going to college and stuff like that.
I think it's great. I think it's a really big opportunities for kids, you know, to get to, they get to experience, you know, different topics, different things and I feel like that's great because my child gets to experience it and I just think that's great.
The Socorro Independent School District hosted its third annual Black History Month Art Contest at the District Service Center. 300 students from districts around the region showcased their art pieces of African-Americans in labor.
If we fail to storytell, if we fail to acknowledge what, you know, horrible things have happened in history and how we have overcome, then we're doomed to repeat that. And so for these kids from elementary to high school, it's super important that they know these stories and that, you know, we've done things to make people's lives better for a reason and so, I mean, what greater avenue to combine art and history?
But it starts with the foundation of knowing what the history is about, so learning the history, knowing where we have come from, give them a better picture of where we are going, so just excited to see their creativity and all of the hard work they did and learning about the subjects of their artwork.
I'm really happy, I'm really proud of myself. I like how, I like that I get to show my parents what I can do and just like, I like to show everyone what I can do.
America's High School Student Athletes signed their letters of intent to play and further their education at the next level. Isaac Arieta will further his education and play baseball at El Paso Community College.
I'm just excited to just continue my career. It means, it's a big thing, since I was little, I've been wanting to play.
Isabella Núñez will be attending Grand Canyon University, where she will continue to play volleyball.
I'm super excited, it's a great school and I can't wait.
Giselle Abascal will continue to run track and cross-country at the University of West Virginia State.
I feel excited, a little nervous, but it's like, a good thing.
Visit sisd.net to get the complete list of students who have committed to furthering their education while continuing to pursue their athletic passion at the collegiate level. That's our show for today. I hope you've enjoyed learning about the latest in the Socorro Independent School District. Make sure to follow us on X with the handle @socorroisd. Also be sure to friend us on Facebook, subscribe to our YouTube channel, Team SISD, and visit our website. Thank you again and see you next time. This past year has tested us in ways we've never imagined. From navigating uncertainty to overcoming challenges. Each of us has played a crucial role in keeping our community strong and resilient. Through it all, one thing has remained clear: our commitment to our students' success. As we reflect on the challenges we faced, we recognize the strength of our unity and the power of being all-in. Being all-in means more than just showing up. It means giving our best every day, supporting each other, and fostering an environment where every student can thrive. It's about going the extra mile, finding solutions together, and lifting each other up during difficult times. Those who are all-in inspire others. They show us what's possible when we refuse to settle for mediocrity. They remind us that greatness lies not in the outcome, but in the journey. The journey of pushing boundaries, overcoming setbacks, and becoming stronger with every step. So as we face the new school year, remember this: life rewards those who are willing to give it their all. Whether you're pursuing a dream, facing a challenge, or simply striving to be the best, choose to be all-in. Because when you are all-in, you're a champion for all of us: students, employees, parents, and families. We are all-in for Team SISD.
Socorro Independent School District has more than 48,000 students and 51 campuses, but we're not just a number. Here, we're cared for, we're loved, we belong. Team SISD is a true Texas public school district that gives us unforgettable memories, traditions, experiences, and the opportunities we need to have a bright, successful future. Want to be a health professional? Once a bulldog, always a bulldog. When I design skyscrapers, it's an empire for that. Have you heard, "The early bird gets the worm"? Well, that's why they fear the falcons. We don't just rise, this is Sparta. We earn our horns and trailblaze and overcome to be the first and the best. I know, I know, it sounds extra, but it's just our flex. For over 60 years, Socorro ISD has set its sights on our future with vision, innovation, investing, building, and planning to prepare us for the real world. These are our opportunities and we will seize them.
Socorro ISD registration opens March 3rd for Kinder through 12th grade. Enroll in a district known for exceptional academics, award-winning fine arts and athletic programs, and cutting-edge facilities. Our groundbreaking academies and career programs provide excellent learning opportunities. Out-of-district transfer applications are now open. Don't wait, secure your child's spot today and seize your opportunity in Team SISD.
Socorro ISD offers 45 different pathways in CTE. We have added PTECs, Pathways in Technology Early College High Schools. We have seven Advanced Academies. And we also, throughout the district, offer seven early college high school opportunities for our students. So a lot of choices students have to make while in eighth grade so that they have a pleasant experience while in high school.
My favorite part of HPA is the fact that we get like, opportunities to go outside of school and go into hospitals, so we can actually get that hands-on and like, actually view what is actually happening in the hospitals and clinicals. Since I'm interested in being an RN, I got to talk to actual RNs about their experience, where they're from. We went to UMC, we went to Providence. I also got to do middle schools and elementaries. It really helps you like, build that, build that understanding of how everybody's different and you have to understand and like, care to their needs.
Because it is really a dream that, if I was a kid, I would have never believed that I was doing all this stuff that I was doing in the program. They make me feel like family. There's a sense that I don't get in any other setting. When I'm at school, I don't feel like I'm at school, I feel like I'm doing something that I want to and the day goes by quick, super quick, and it just gives that sense of well-being and... And it just gives that sense of well-being and family. And it really is a dream because I would have never thought I would be in the position that I'm in.
Students can select up to three different programs or academies that they would like to attend. And through the lottery process, they're placed in those different academies or early college high schools that they choose. We've had over 80% first selection offered for our students.
The Libertad Academy is a law and government program where students can learn how to be lawmakers, law officials, learn about the government, how it was brought up, and basically prepare us for the future in some sort of government professional field. My parents and I, we actually thought it was a really amazing opportunity, even as a high school student, starting your freshman year, that you get to start learning about these career fields and that you get to really experience it firsthand and you get to learn about these careers that you want to go into and get a step ahead of everybody else. It was just, we had to take it. It was an amazing opportunity.
The academy provides a really unique experience because it offers students the rigor of not only college, but also like kind of a taste of law school, which is really unique. It's something that we really don't have anywhere nearby. So I think that it's really, really cool that it provides that educational opportunity, but also it provides that community. A lot of people think that we're just all business, that we don't have fun, but we really have become like a family. I really have found some amazing friends, amazing professors.
It's taken a huge investment, not only in equipment, facilities, but also in maintaining our teachers' credentials, getting them training, keeping them up to date with current standards. Socorro has always been known as a progressive district by what we offer our kids is supersedes most other school districts across the state. And I have great confidence that we'll continue to progress with what's leading our schools.
So our dual-language program consists of two different types of models. We have the 90-10, which is for pre-k students. And this is where the students are in a classroom with one teacher. Depending on their first language, they're going to get 90% of the instruction in English, 10% in Spanish, or vice versa, 90% in Spanish, 10% in English. And then we have our 50-50 model. And this starts from kinder all the way to 5th grade. And this is where the students have two teachers where they're learning both languages, English and Spanish. 50-50% of the time, depending on the taught subject and language.
The dual-language program is so much more than just learning to speak in another language. They learn how to read, how to write, and they learn about the other culture and how to appreciate it, and they become very successful.
In order for the students to become bilingual and bilingual, they need to make sure that they are consistent with the program at least five years. Once a student completes five full years in the dual-language program, then they can qualify for a Spanish high school credit that they take with them when they're in middle school.
I think it's important to learn English and Spanish so people can feel happy that you can communicate them in Spanish or English. So when I'm older, I could and they ask me questions in Spanish, I can answer them in Spanish and English.
We are growing our students in a very competitive, global society where dualism is extremely important in any type of business that you go into, not just into education. The students, we're preparing them to be global, competitive citizens of society. And having that dualism in their pocket is really going to open doors for them.
El conocimiento que adquieren se refleja no nada más académicamente, sino también culturalmente, socialmente. Ellos aprenden de culturas diferentes, aprenden a convivir con personas que son diferentes a ellos. Y luego yo pienso que eso también los ayuda a sentirse aceptados, aceptar a otros. Y es un programa bien bonito, me encanta.
Pues yo me siento feliz porque soy en dos lenguajes. Van a tener dos maestras, van a aprender dos lenguajes, y van a tener muchos amigos que hablan español y inglés.
I can say that SISD is truly the district that offers many opportunities for our students. And I vouch that dual language is not just opening doors for our students to become bilingual and bilingual, but it's opening doors for their future.
Socorro ISD makes learning innovative. We fly drones, we take center stage, we take care of the environment, and we learn to take care of our health and become lifelong learners. Our new elementary academies offer unique programs to inspire, challenge, and prepare us for success. Register now at sisd.net and seize your opportunity in Team SISD.
The Socorro Independent School District is committed to helping all students find their voice and achieve their highest potential. We understand the important role that families play in our children's education, and we welcome you, our military-connected families, to Team SISD. With 46 schools designated Purple Star campuses by the Texas Education Agency, the most of any school district in the El Paso region, Team SISD is committed to supporting the unique needs of military-connected students and their families through a variety of resources and services. These include a comprehensive website for military families, a campus transition program, multiple special events, military family life counselors, and a military liaison at each of our 51 campuses who all reach out and serve our military-connected families. Team SISD stays in close contact with our Fort Bliss counterparts to access and share information, ideas, and trainings to provide the best education for our 6,500-plus military-connected students. To assist with the social and emotional needs of our students, we maximize support services by engaging with our school counselors, including our military and family life counselor and local agencies such as NAMI, the YWCA, Child Guidance Center, local daycare providers, and the Paso del Norte and Meadows Family Leadership Council. We value and greatly appreciate the sacrifice our military parents make for our country, our community, and our children. We salute you, and we are delighted to have the opportunity to serve you and your family in our district. Thank you for being part of our district and helping us ensure that Team SISD is the right choice for endless opportunities. Hello and welcome to SISD TV News, where we deliver the latest news about the Socorro Independent School District. In our top story, the Socorro Independent School District hosted the 2025 SISD Teacher of the Year Elite Eight Reception at the Technology Service Center. All SISD Campus Teachers of the Year were honored with a special token of appreciation commemorating their achievement, and the top Elite Eight finalists were announced during the special ceremony.
The words can't describe the gratitude that I have to the district, to my campus, to my administration team, to my colleagues, to my wife, my family. Just very, very blessed, overwhelming feeling of just, you know, gratefulness.
You're always trying to like just say your name in your brain over and over and over, and then you actually see it, and then it's like, oh my gosh! And you're just shocked, shocked that out of all the 50 teachers, you're one of the top eight selected.
Dr. Ignacio Astorga, Principal at Socorro High School, was named the District Nine Administrator of the Year at this year's District Nine Spring Conference at America's High School. The purpose of District Nine is to develop leadership abilities in students and advisors, promote democracy as a way of life, and establish and uphold high standards for local school councils.
It's a hard work of everybody. It's a culmination of not just the faculty and staff, but of what our students do and what our expectations are of our kids. And our expectations should be high for any school that we're at. And if you challenge the kids, they will reach that challenge. And that's what our kids have done, they have reached that challenge. And this is just a culmination of everything. So this award's not for me, it's for Socorro High School and our kids.
I was so honored that Ms. Lopez reached out to me to write a letter of rec for him. He has been my principal since the beginning of freshman year. So throughout this whole journey, I have been with him, nothing but support from him. And anything we have given of ideas or anything that we need, he has supported us 100% and no doubt in anything that we can do. Writing the letter of recommendation for him felt so natural. Anything came out, and just describing him as a wonderful principal was amazing to do. And I know he supports a student council, so to put him in a D9 level was just an amazing experience to do. And I'm so glad not only myself, but the rest of my council could help and surprise him. It was hard getting him out here because he knows everything that goes on in our campus. So a little lie to get him here, I was totally okay with it. And seeing his surprise and seeing his reaction just made my day and my year to make him a D9 Administrator of the Year.
The American Federation of Teachers gave away over 1,000 books to students and teachers of all grade levels at Colonel Ben Narbith Elementary School as part of the Reading Opens the World Initiative with First Book.
We believe in giving back to our community much-needed resources to make sure that our students succeed. We like to give them away and make sure that there's plenty of opportunities for our kids to be successful and thrive.
It's a whole other world. It opens up a whole new world for our students. And for them to just get away from the TV and the social media and just sit down with a good book and enjoy that, they're really excited about it.
I was against other kids to read because it can help them be like super smart. They can learn how to pronounce bigger words.
Socorro ISD Interim Superintendent James Vázquez surprised the top four School Support Employee of the Year finalists with a special gift and visited each of their campuses and departments. Francisco Felix Martinez is the Head Custodian at Mission Early College High School.
For me, the most important thing is that I'm part of a bigger thing than all of us. And what it is for me is that having a clean classroom, clean restrooms, and to see those kids, the students that are happy when they graduate and they graduate from college is something that is priceless to me because I'm part of it. And I'm making a difference for my campus.
Armando Álvarez is a crosswalk monitor at Loma Verde Elementary School.
I couldn't believe it, though. You know, I didn't think you were coming to see me, like I said earlier, though. I was just like doing my regular stuff, like I always do, try to help the kids, make sure that they have their food and everything. But I am really surprised.
Jesús Salas is the Head Custodian for the Department of Athletics.
I feel so proud myself, and I feel so proud of the team that we work here in the Athletics Department, and to be recognized, like, it's awesome, guys. Also, I feel like the district, like the whole district employees, all custodians, I'm representing that. Not only my facility, I'm representing like maintenance and operations at all, you know? So I feel amazing.
And Deney Muñoz is the Campus Secretary at Specialist Rafael Hernando III Middle School.
We have an amazing team here, and they're my babies. The team here is literally my baby. And just to see my team out here in the front supporting me when I'm the one that supports them all the time, it's just so fulfilling. It's really just an emotion that's so fulfilling.
The University of Texas at El Paso awarded excellent scholarships to 38 students from America's High School and 19 students from Montwood High School. The scholarships that range from $2,000 to $8,000 will allow students to pursue their dreams of higher education at UTEP.
It goes beyond just that you pay of the ranking, that they do so many things. The family dynamics are so complex. And there are students that sometimes they never thought of getting a scholarship and only like smart students. No, everything matters. So you will have students, you will have parents that for the first time, they're going to be talking about more than just financially. They're going to be talking about, my son, my daughter, is getting a scholarship, a UTEP Excellent Scholarship, and we're so proud of that.
I feel really good about myself because during like the previous years, I was kind of like down about my grades, but like I got them up. And knowing that I got this scholarship like just gives me that peace of mind.
This is just an exciting opportunity. Relieving this financial burden is just something that everyone is looking for. I believe being able to be a recipient of the scholarship is something so honorable. UTEP was the university I was planning on attending. So just having that leverage on that concern of like, how am I going to pay for this? And all that, like just it going away is something that I'm grateful to receive as a person.
I'm actually really excited. I didn't know it was happening. I thought this was like an information thing. Like they'd be like, oh, like you're a finalist, but you have to do this, this, and this to win it. I didn't know we were going to win, but I'm actually really excited.
The Libertad Academy for Law, Government, and Public Administration was awarded the Haddon Summers Civic Foundation Grant for the ninth year in a row. This grant allows students to learn about civics during their spring break and introduces incoming 8th graders to the Advanced Academic Academy. This year's focus was the First Amendment.
We use that topic because I think the kids find it very interesting. But it also allows them an opportunity to understand the concept of researching, the concepts of looking at court decisions, and then keeping updated with, you know, current decisions, with how it works. And then we also gave them an insight of to, you know, what are their rights on the school campus? Because they think that they have unlimited rights, and it gives them an opportunity to see how, you know, Supreme Court decisions, local decisions also impact their daily lives.
I feel like it's going to give me a head start at life, mostly. And it's going to help me advance in school, help me with a lot of different things.
I mean, I already know about the First Amendment, but it goes so deep into detail about like our freedoms and stuff, and the court cases about the First Amendment.
Team SISD sophomores, juniors, and seniors explored future career options at the Annual College Career and Job Expo at Montwood High School. Students got the opportunity to speak with college, technical school representatives, and meet with local business and industry partners to learn about possible opportunities available to them, such as internships or employment opportunities.
The reality of our students going to school without working is it's been an issue here in El Paso and nationwide now. Information provided about our state's graduation rates, UTEP's graduation rates are up, but they're still a six-year, 42% graduation rate, which means our kids who are going to school at UTEP, they're taking time to go there, and they're most likely working, supporting the family, and paying bills as they're going to school. So they leave our schools with college credits as well as skills to help them find a higher-paying job. They probably don't have to work so much to be able to achieve their goals in a quicker time period.
I really like it, and everybody was super helpful about their tips with interviews. And overall, it was super nice. I've been trying to look for more of a better job that pays better, obviously, because I'm about to graduate high school, and I need to start looking for a better job.
Coming here made me realize like a lot. Like you can benefit for so much just by showing up, asking questions, and asking around, like how does this work and stuff like that? So yes, really beneficial. And going to summer, I do want to look for, again, internships or jobs or whatnot, make that like little money on the extra side, and again, take that like big step next in life, you know?
That's our show for today. I hope you've enjoyed learning about the latest in the Socorro Independent School District. Make sure to follow us on X with the handle @socorroISD. Also be sure to friend us on Facebook, subscribe to our YouTube channel, Team SISD, and visit our website. Thank you again, and see you next time. Hello and welcome to SISD TV News, where we deliver the latest news about the Socorro Independent School District. In our top story, Team SISD High Schools officially launched the Region 19 Girls Flag Football Pilot Championship in partnership with the Dallas Cowboys and the Houston Texans. The schools participated in a blind draft to determine the team they will be affiliated with.
This opportunity is for those female athletes. I think of my own daughter when we talk about this. And so we just want to make sure that they have an opportunity to participate in a growing sport. There are scholarship opportunities. Some of the schools, smaller schools across the nation are offering scholarships for it. So it's just another opportunity to showcase the amazing female athletes we have in the El Paso region.
I'm just really excited to get to learn as a coach and then help the girls learn and be football players. That's just something that we're going to learn together. And I think it's going to be a really great experience, and then hopefully expand it to UIL. I meant, that's going to be amazing.
It's truly their opportunity. They deserve the right to go compete. Football is the greatest sport, in my opinion, in this world. And so we do so much for our men. We go above and beyond for our men, tackle, and all these different things, 7-on-7 for our boys. It's our opportunity, it's our duty to make sure that we give those same opportunities, and we give the same energy, we give the same effort to our young ladies, because they deserve it, they've earned it, and it's just their time.
Students from Socorro ISD's six comprehensive high schools participated in CareerCon XXL at Eastlake High School. Students had the opportunity to have one-on-one conversations with employers, learn about exciting career paths, and get advice on taking the necessary steps towards their dream job.
This is one of two CareerCon events we have. All of our sophomores take a Financial Literacy class, and it's a semester course. So we have a JobCon or a CareerCon in the fall for about 1,800 students. And we have one again in the spring for approximately 1,800 students. And Financial Literacy, we cover three different areas, personal financial literacy, as well as college readiness and career readiness. Students create their endorsement when they're eighth grade. They revisit it when they're a sophomore. The last time they can change their endorsement is by the start of their junior year. So it's prime time for the kids to prep for college courses and also to review their endorsement and review the different careers that they can prepare for while in high school.
We get to experience all these types of careers that we could go into the future. We have different options on which jobs we could participate. We have different options we can explore, because not everybody likes the same job, and not everybody's going to have the same job. So we just get to experience the different careers.
It helps a lot with people who aren't really sure what they want to do after high school. And it just helps me be aware of what are my options and what exactly the jobs are into detail.
Team SISD's Project Search program hosted a Coffee Connections event where students with developmental disabilities can find a job and gain work experience. Students were able to talk to and network with possible employers who are looking to hire.
It started off initially as a networking event, just to get the program out there and have the students highlight their many skill sets. However, as you've seen today, it has evolved more into a reverse job, where these students are prepared to be interviewed. They have resumes in hand. They're highlighting the many skill sets to today's employers that got invited.
It feels amazing. I'm scary because this is your first time.
Project Search has always been a big program for me that I love to just volunteer like on my personal time. And these kids are amazing. So here at Rice Federal Credit, we are looking for the next diamond in the rough, and we feel that these kids are going to be those diamonds in the rough.
Pebble Hills High School student athletes Dorian Jaramillo and Serian Quarles signed their letters of intent to play football and further their education at Tyler Junior College and Sisco College.
I picked Sisco because it makes me feel like I'm at home. They make me feel comfortable with who I am. I mean, I'm a little nervous, but I'm excited. I'm happy.
TJC, I chose them because they're a great junior college. They're one of the best in the conference in the nation. And they're really good at developing football players and getting them to the next level, to Division One, which is where I want to be. And I really like the coaching staff and the city. So it's a really good place.
Socorro ISD students demonstrated how technology has enhanced their educational experiences and equipped them with the skills to succeed in a digital world at the Annual Academic Technology Showcase at the District Service Center. The district-wide event welcomes students from all grade levels to compete, showcasing their technology skills, creativity, critical thinking, communication, and teamwork.
We cannot do this without the support of the teachers and the enthusiasm that they have in their classrooms every day. And that's what translates into the energy that you're seeing today, because it's evidence that kids are enjoying their learning and that they're excited about using technology in their classrooms. So when they get an opportunity to showcase their work, that's fulfilling the mission of this great event, that we actually give them an opportunity to show to the community all of the wonderful things that they're getting to experience and feel a part of in our district.
It feels amazing. I love it so much. I think that it gives me one foot in front of the door when it comes to going to college and stuff like that.
I think it's great. I think it's a really big opportunity for kids to get to. They get to experience different topics, different things. And I feel like that's great because my child gets to experience it, and I just think that's great.
We're back from executive session. The time is 8:29 PM. The date is Monday, June 9, 2025. We have a confirm quorum. And again, Ms. Macias is joining us virtually. As discussed in executive session, we're going to proceed with Tasbi and the superintendent search. With there being no further business before this board, we're adjourned at 8:30 PM. The date is Monday, June 9, 2025.